Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of March 18th. Hello, can I get your attention, please? Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 18th, 2024 City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Franciaci, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I'd like to move to excuse Mr. McDougall and Mr. Young from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Ms. Hubick to excuse Mr. Young and Mr. McDougall. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, first up is announcements and committee reports. I've got a couple of announcements, so bear with me. First announcement is our Avenue, thank you. And just, our Avenue was open to the public on Friday, March 15th, 2024, at 3:30. I know that was a relief to a lot of folks. The our Avenue Long-Term Improvement Project added improvements to the our Avenue corridor to enhance safety and multimodal access. Improvements included constructing a roundabout at our Avenue and 30th Street, 10-foot-wide multi-use sidewalks on both sides of our Avenue between 22nd and 34th Street, full median on our Avenue from 22nd to 34th Street, rain gardens to treat stormwater runoff from our Avenue, street and pedestrian scale lighting, ADA accessible street crossings, and enhanced bus stops. So I'd like to thank our Public Works Department for their great work bringing this project to fruition. Thanks to SRV Construction and their crew for their hard work, as well as thank our granting agencies, National Highway Freight Program, Skagit Council of Governments, and the Transportation Improvement Board for making the funding of this critical project possible. And I thank you also the Port of Anacortes willingness to step in and help. I think they helped us with some street sweeping to get it open. I once again thank the public and project neighbors for your patience and understanding while these improvements were completed. It's an important part of our city's mission to move traffic efficiently while keeping our citizens and visitors safe on the road. And as always, drive safely and thoughtfully. Next, I didn't get a chance last week, I forgot to thank HF Sinclair for their generous donation to our Parks Department for playground safety equipment. And I think our first project, we're already targeting a swing set in our town, our park at Storvik. And egg dash, Friday, March 22nd, 6:00 PM. I think we joke and say it's going to be from 6:00 PM to 6:01 PM. It's a mad dash for 5,000 eggs, and then, once the dash for the eggs begin, it'll go quickly, so make sure you're on time. Don't forget to bring your basket. There'll also be an event for kids, this event is for kids 12 and under, but there'll be a separate section for the little ones. And I can't recall what age that cutoff is, but I'm sure you'll be able to figure it out. All right, last thing, I got a, this is for council primarily, but I'm sure the public might be interested. I got a concern from a couple of council members that some decisions will be made in committee and potential creation of serial meetings. And then, just to remind council, the council procedures, purpose of the, of council committees are for studying and considering policy issues and bringing recommendations on issues forward to the full council for consideration. Issues may be referred to a committee by the council for the committee to review and make recommendations back to council. Issues may also be brought to a committee's attention by any council member, by city staff or the public through council member or staff. Committees will also assist staff by reviewing issues in advance of the presentation of the full council. Council committees do not represent and may not speak for the city council. So again, right out of the council procedures, just a reminder to make sure we're communicating the information to all council members. All right, that's all the announcements I have. Public Works Committee, speaking of committee reports, we always have good committee reports, and next up.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Carolyn Moulton and I met as the Public Works Committee just an hour before this meeting. And we called that particular committee meeting for the purpose of discussing the 12th and Commercial Roundabout. We had some additional questions and concerns after the presentation from two weeks ago. And our conclusion, based on the information that we obtained in that meeting, is that we should be reconsidering whether we pursue a roundabout at 12th and Commercial. The cost of the project. The, the cost of the project exceeds the money that has been granted to us, which I think we always knew was going to be the case. But we are running up against hard timelines. We don't know the final cost of the project at this point. And as you all might recall, Alta, the, our engineering firm that is working on this, had provided us an alternative way back when, in the 2015 or so South Commercial Avenue Plan, for that intersection that would be quite a lot cheaper. One of the things that concerned us the most from the meeting two weeks ago was the idea that the intersection might be under construction for six months. That is still a question mark, but it certainly was something to be concerned about. We don't know that the intersection would actually be closed for that period of time. But based on our discussions, and we invited the mayor to sit in on the meeting as well, we would like council to revisit this next week, so that we can make a decision on it and inform our consultants how we would like to proceed. So that was the, the only subject of our meeting at 5:00. We wanted to get that in front of you right away, because if we do want to change course, there are instructions we've got to give our consultants to minimize the, the damage to what we've spent on the grant so far. So I, I guess I'm not necessarily inviting instant reactions, but I would like for us to consider that next week.
Yeah, so I'm getting the head nods, we'll bring that to council. And again, it was a good, good discussion, as we all know, the, when we first were presented this, many, a couple of years ago at least, the concept of a roundabout there, and it was kind of 50/50 with 51% leaning, leaning towards roundabout. So again, Alta's marching down that plan, working on a 60% design, but sooner we can get a decision from council, the better. All right, next up is Economic Development Committee. We have a, I think we had a, any, we had, Mr. Coleman, did, can you, did we have a meeting?
So on Tuesday of last week, there was an Economic Development Committee meeting. Anthony Young, Councilman Anthony Young and Mr. McDougall.
Oh, okay.
The two members there.
We can hold that report till the next council meeting, thank you for that. Any other announcements or committee reports? Okay, move on to public comments, item number four. Any member of the public wish to address to the council anything that is not on our agenda? And I got quite a few folks signed up. Most have signed up for short-term rental and Cap Santee View Project, so I'll call on, I'll make sure everybody who signs up gets to go first. And I'll call on you when we get to those items. So Cap Santee will be first after our consent agenda, and, and then short-term rental after that. So I'll, I'll call them, but I have, Ms. McCord, did you, were you, I didn't write down what you were going to talk about. Was it on neither one of those subjects? Okay, then that's your time. Come on up and address the council. And I think you know the drill, please state your name and the city you live in for the record.
Lynanne McCord, Anacortes. As noted last week in my public comment, government, businesses, and individuals are drowning in unstable and unsustainable debt likely to lead to massive financial stress in 2024. In the hectic pace of day-to-day operations, it's easy for the members of this city council to lose sight of the formidable responsibilities that accompany handling a budget of more than $100 million for a city of only about 18,000 people. With that in mind, I would like to respectfully submit that the Anacortes City Council stop work on Habitat for Humanity until it completes its own due diligence, investigation, and analysis to establish that this project is not an illegal gift under Washington law. The gift of public funds doctrine refers to a fairly broad set of prohibitions contained in the Washington State Constitution. No county, city, town, or other municipal corporation shall thereafter give any money or property, or loan its money or credit to or in aid of any individual, association, company, or corporation except as necessary to support the poor or infirm. There's some exceptions to this. There's a two-part test, which you will be able to look up. And when it comes to the poor and infirm, I would suggest that, under the duty to account that you haven't provided the necessary clear, detailed, accurate records on the money and property that you'll be handling. And that you have to be able to explain that in an understandable way. And as I mentioned, I should be able to understand it, and I think the people here should be able to understand it. And it has to be done in a careful, competent, diligent way. So here's my suggestion. In the rush of getting something done, the city council did not provide the public with legally sufficient information on the details of this project, nor has the city council given the public sufficient time to do its own due diligence to ensure that all of the affected citizens' concerns are heard and addressed. The best way to lessen the city council's workload burden while meeting the heavy legal responsibilities of public servants handling $100 million of the public's money is to partner with the public you serve. After all, we, we all have invested interest in doing what's best for all of us who call Anacortes our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council on not short-term rentals and our other subject tonight, the Cap Santee? Okay, come on up.
Pat Gardner, Anacortes, Mayor, council members, good evening. My question, and I haven't been researching anything, but just from, from last week's meeting, council meeting, and what I'm hearing, with apartments being built, whether they're the little cottages on lots or apartments, parking, most residents or most units have two cars, because it's usually a couple. So there's two cars. I'm seeing that there's only one garage, and they're barely big enough for a Volkswagen Beetle, because most cars are getting bigger. And so they're parking on the street. My concern is, we don't want people parking on the street any more than necessary because the crime is getting worse, not here, but all, well, here too. But car break-ins, windows smashed and stuff, so we, developers need to provide, whether it's a parking lot with cameras or lights, or a garage big enough to accommodate their residents to safely park without parking on the street, because they're, again, they're taking up, you know, and parking all over the street, and we have an issue already with street parking. So I would appreciate, you know, consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly List, I have, I see your hands raised, are you, want to talk about short-term rentals or Cap Santee, or something else?
I'd like to talk about the build on West 5th.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, my name's Kelly List, I live on West 6th Street in Anacortes. I'm against the city's proposed build of five single-family homes jammed onto a lot that has traditionally been zoned for two homes. Councilman Ryan Walters has sent an email stating the city's plan to move forward with this bill based on the developer's agreement to proceed with the project. The letter made it sound as if this was a done deal. I can understand how people would think this, especially since the developer, Habitat, has been telling its volunteers that there will be a build on this parcel. Here are some items in Councilmember Walter's letter that I'd like to highlight. I know that the city has done a poor job communicating about the project, and for that I apologize. Why is it, this was in the letter, why is it when someone wants to put a small home business in our neighborhood that there's a large public notice posted at that location for all the neighbors to see? I think it's to inform the neighbors regarding a proposed change to the nature of the neighborhood. I think, will the council please make a similar posting on the build parcel? It has a far larger impact on the neighborhood than a small home salon. Why has communication regarding this project been so limited? The apology for lack of communication sort of smacks of the ask forgiveness rather than permission ideology. The letter goes on to say that cottage-style housing is a traditional style of development. I think the euphemistic use of the term cottage is a marketing ploy to make the public think that these are small, one-story, one-bedroom, 600-foot structures instead of five, two-story, 1,200-square-foot homes. If this is a traditional style of development, where has this been developed traditionally in Anacortes? Certainly not in this neighborhood. Mr. Walters goes on to quote code stating that this build will provide, quote, "high-quality infill development that is compatible with existing neighborhoods." Council members, how is this compatible with our neighborhood? As you are hearing, week after week, this build is highly incompatible with the neighborhood. There is much more to say regarding the letter and the project, and I caution council to be wary of enthusiastic support from residents that are unaffected by the build. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on the, not the two subjects that I've mentioned? Come on up.
Yeah.
Well, my name is Shiwa Mu, and I live in Anacortes. Good evening, Mayor Miller and Anacortes City Council members. Two weeks ago, I raised three questions at the council meeting and have not had any response from the council members. And I would like to repeat my questions and would appreciate the city council's response. Number one, has the West 5th Street five-unit housing project been approved? If so, we would want to know what communications and pertinent documents slash processes were used for the approval, since it is a single-family lot in the city of Anacortes. Question two, we would also want to know how the project will be funded and the process for selecting the dollar amount of funding, because it impacts our tax base. Additionally, just listen to other comments, I have the following questions for the city council. Number three, in the 197-page Agenda Packet dated February 20th, 2024, I find a plain view layout for the five units on the parcel. In County Assessor's website, the parcel was described as "two-building sites." We would like the council to enlighten us on the rationale for five units instead of two that's listed for the site. Question number four, what is the impact of additional traffic and congestion along the 5th Street area for the neighbors with five homes and the potentially 10 extra vehicles on the two-building-site parcel? Question five, there was a clause in the Agenda Packet that the tenants can sublease the units to whomever. What are the checks in place to ensure neighborhood safety is maintained? Question six, how do you guarantee high-quality design by Habitat for Humanity? I am from a building industry, home building industry, and Habitat for Humanity is not known for architectural design. Number seven, how do five cabins or cottages on a parcel for two sites enhance the character of the entire neighborhood? Last one, who determines the compatibility with existing neighborhood? And I appreciate the council's response. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, come on up.
Suzanne Roner, Anacortes. I'm ecstatic that you guys are reconsidering the roundabout. I stand on that corner every week for an hour at a time, and I have a plan that would work. All you have to do is cut off the entrance at 12th into Safeway, reverse the parking on the west side of Safeway so that you can exit onto 13th, and life will be good. In response to the woman who was asking about the parking for the new housing, that's, that's part of the plan, that there not be parking. Part of the plan, there's this term called vehicle miles driven that's in our future. And our future does not include cows, it doesn't include cars. So I think we might as well put that on the table. And then one more thing, I went to a community forum last week, Councilwoman Walters was there, and Councilwoman Cleveland McGrath. And one of the people in the audience mentioned that all the growth, all the new buildings, the close to 3,000, not new buildings, new dwellings that would be crammed into Anacortes, that the majority of those people would be renters. And there was some pushback from the council people that there's nothing wrong with renters, they're good people. I agree, they miss the point. The point is, there is truth to the pride of ownership. There is truth in having ownership giving you some dog in the fight. There's this effort by the United Nations, the World Economic Forum, to destroy our property rights. In case you don't know, we're supposed to own nothing and be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more time for non-short-term rentals and cap. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Before you move on to the consent agenda, if anybody has questions about something, which is the reason I wrote an email back to people who I had email addresses for, please, the clerk will take your email address, you can email us, we will respond via email. If you say your name and I don't have your email and you leave the room, I, I have difficulty following up. I think all of us are good with that. So please, leave contact information, email, phone number, whatever, we'll get back to.
Yeah, and like I mentioned at the, maybe two council meetings ago, trying to answer some of the public comment questions, there has been no action on the west, there's no permits issued, it's, it is city-owned land, it's in the R2A zone, and again, specific questions about that project, there'll be, there'll be ample opportunity. Okay, consent agenda, items 5, A, B, and C, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve items 5, A through C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve consent agenda items A through C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to item six, Other Business, first item is 6A, Cap Santee Park Lookout Proposal. This is a discussion item with some possible action, and Mr. Lunsford's going to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, audience members. So tonight we are back to discuss the Rotary Lookouts Proposal. We spoke to council back at, in December, we were discussing LTAC capital funds, we were asked to bring back a full proposal. We discussed that at our Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, and Mr. McDougall was in attendance, asked us to schedule a brief discussion with you all. So that's our purpose here tonight. I'm here with Mr. Litzinger and other Rotarians to discuss it with you. So this is a project that has gone through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, they looked at the proposal, they viewed it was in a project that we wanted to go forward with, it's part of a overall plan on Cap Santa. Last, was it 2022 run, the completion of the trail from the west side. In 2024, the Parks Department's going to complete the trail on the east side, past the amphitheater. And so this part at the, at the lookout is kind of a, a nice designation for us to help with folks wanting to get off the parking lot, folks who have low mobility issues, and a low-profile way for folks to enjoy the area and the view. So we understand there's many questions about traffic, the Rotary Club funded a traffic study, a critical areas study was completed, and we're here to make this presentation to you tonight and answer any questions. So that's my introduction. Mr. Litzinger, if you want to come up and speak specifically about the plan, I'm here with you if any questions come up.
And while he's coming up, I'll apologize to the fact that I'm a newcomer to Anacortes only 25 years, and I use the Cap Santee pronunciation as opposed to the Cap Santa, but either way is acceptable.
That's true.
All right, thank you, John. As John said, my name is Ron Litzinger, member of the Rotary, and also a Cap Santa resident. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their interest in the Rotary project, and I'm happy to provide a very quick overview tonight as you consider approval of the $75,000 grant recommended by LTAC. Rotary has raised $455,000 of our target budget of $550,000 for the project. This grant would certainly help us, and I would like also to thank John Lunsford and his team for their counsel and support over the last six years that we've pursued this project. The proposed viewpoint is outlined in blue on the slide. It is on the east side of the Summit parking lot with views of Mount Baker. While we certainly want to provide an attractive upgrade to the park, our primary objective was to provide access to all visitors. The rugged terrain of the park is part of the natural beauty, but that same rugged terrain does limit access to the views for some that are mobility-challenged. Many of us have experienced that with either elderly parents or disabled friends, hence we're proposing a safe platform isolated from the parking lot to take in the views. To minimize the environmental impacts and the costs, it was in our interest to reduce the footprint to the minimum required to meet our ADA access objectives. That said, we did make some of the paths a little bit wider than the minimum required in order to accommodate two wheelchairs passing by simultaneously. That was a good suggestion that we received from some folks looking at it. And while the two-tiered curvilinear design is certainly cool aesthetically, what we were trying to accomplish there was to follow the natural contours, and what that does is it makes it a low-profile structure looking from the water. The retaining wall at its maximum height is eight feet, and frankly, it's usually in about the four-foot range for most of it. As John mentioned, we've completed our studies, both the critical area and the traffic studies were favorable. I will leave that to questions, since we're really focused on LTAC tonight. I would also note that the club took an integrated approach to this, and we completed the Summit Trail rehabilitation with the specific purpose of reducing traffic to the summit. Parks has made the land use permit application, we expect our notice of application to be posted on Wednesday, and that will initiate the 14-day public comment period. Once we've reviewed those comments, then we will consider, we expect to begin final engineering and a building permit application in anticipation of starting construction this summer. And that concludes the remarks.
So this time, if the council has any questions of myself or Mr. Litzinger, or we have Mr. Garrison here, two, our engineer, we're happy to do our best to answer those.
And then I got a couple of folks who have signed up to
Oh, of course.
Speak from the public. And so I, first up, I've got Cynthia Richardson. And so first up, I've got Cynthia Richardson.
That would be Cynthia Richardson, Anna Cortis. I've lived on Cap Santa for 22 years now, and every car that goes up to the viewpoint goes by my house. And I love it. It's such a beautiful place to live. And I have a picture somewhere of my father standing on that viewpoint about 40 years ago, looking out over the city. And I looked on the museum website, did a search to see if I could find out what year the road was paved to go up there, and the parking lot was paved, and I couldn't find it, so I'm going to guess. It's probably been at least 60 years, maybe 80, I don't know. I went up yesterday, and I thought to myself, well, what amenities do we have up there for our citizens and our visitors when they make their way up to the viewpoint? Of course, the primary amenity is the view. There are also three benches, which you have to get on the grass and then up on the concrete pad to get onto the bench. There are two trash cans, nice, round, green trash cans. There's one sign that lists all the rules that you have to follow when you're on park property. And there's an information sign about what used to be down below. I think that it's worth for us and our visitors to have a little more amenities up there.
Thank you. Jim Oshman.
The park up there is beautiful views of the area, and I don't think I can be as eloquent as the last speaker there, but I'm completely for this, which I believe is a low-impact, low-profile, and will make it just that much nicer, in particular for people who have a little bit of difficulty moving around. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And again, I know lots of you folks are here to talk about Cap Santa, but is there anybody else who wants to come up? I don't have anybody else signed up. But with that, I'll turn it over to council for questions at this point. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Can you, can one of you point out on the diagram where the eight-foot height retaining walls are?
The maximum is towards the south end, the lobe that sticks out. That's where the contour goes the lowest, and that's be about, at that point, it'd be about where it's eight feet. Most of it's four to six feet. We tried to follow the contour line the best we could.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So thank you very much for coming back and giving this presentation. I remember that it had been pulled off of the funding for further discussion, and I think this is a great presentation of what it could be up there. You said six years, it's been a concept and something, and I think when you go through and you read the packet that was sent out to council and it's for public consumption, you really can get a feeling for the amount of thought and detail that has been put into the project. Everything from keeping the madrona tree up there, you know, building around the madrona tree, making sure we don't lose, I mean, I think it's just some blackberry bushes, for lack of a better term, that will be, would actually be removed. I also am a big fan of the ADA, making it more ADA compliant. We do have a very large senior population, as well as folks with disabilities that should be able to enjoy that. I know I've heard a lot of folks bring up, you know, well, it's going to create more people hanging out up there, and more access up there and everything, and I'm kind of okay with that, because I really feel like this is, you know, this is one of the first stops on what I call the tour of Anna Cortis, when you bring people to town, when people come to visit you. And they go up there, and they spend maybe 20, 30 minutes. It's not like a Washington park, where you'll go and spend maybe several hours out there, you're really going for the view and the photos and everything. I think making that safer, making it more accessible is a great thing, and similar to Ms. Richardson who spoke, I've heard from several residents in that area that are okay with the very minimal increase in traffic. I appreciated the traffic study that talked about everything from, there's only been, I think, .6 accidents on that road every year, like, so there's not even really an accident that happens every year, like, there was a lot of thought and a lot of research that went into that as well. I'm very much in favor of, you know, one of the points of that LTAC funding is to be able to offer money to capital projects like this. And so I am very much in favor of, and especially you've raised 450, $455,000, thank you. You know, I think there's nothing better that we as a community can put money into. Clearly, there are a lot of folks that are very passionate about this project, willing to put their own money in, and they need us to get them a little bit further the way there. My one question would be, is if for some reason that that wasn't approved, what would be, what would be the plan to come up with that other, the other $75,000? I would hope that we wouldn't just abandon the project.
No, we would just continue fundraising. One thing that I wouldn't say has hindered us, but we have had a permitting risk disclosure in all of our fundraising, because until you have the permit in hand, at least where I, the industry I came from, you had to disclose that, so we've been very clear on that. And as we get further along in the permitting process, I'm fairly confident we'll be able to get in a few more donations and make it to our target. But the grant would certainly get us much closer to the goal and make it much easier. But our intent is to finish it, and we'll raise the funds.
Sure. And just my last question is, as I'm looking at kind of the drawings and the renderings, I'm not a builder per se, so it takes me a little while to kind of figure that out. But it looks to me like the majority of what's being built is kind of shifting down on the, like, it's not like you were going to put an eight-foot structure above the ground up there, it's mostly flat, and then kind of builds down onto the...
Yeah, to be ADA accessible, the grade that you have to have, the maximum for a wheelchair to go up and down is very slight, and so the majority of the length is driven by that need for a gentle grade. And then, of course, as I said, to keep it low-profile, we ended up going with the two tiers. And then, and then the width was driven by, as I also mentioned, the two wheelchairs passing. Interestingly enough, ADA only requires enough for one wheelchair, so I'm not sure how they get around each other when they, when they, when they meet, but we thought it was appropriate to go for two. But that's really, keeps it low, and as you mentioned, where we're at, you know, we had to study the contours and get the right spot, and really, all there is there now are the Himalayan blackberries, and those are actually non-native, so I don't know if that's a benefit, but we will replace two-to-one mitigation as part of the plan.
Thank you.
And just to remind council, as you are well aware, that LTAC did approve that funding, and I think, you know, and that's the ask tonight, but probably the other ask to answer your permitting question is, kind of make sure that council either is for the project going forward or not. I think that'll be a good statement for council to make tonight. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
What is your timeline for construction? And this is a city project, it's going to be bid out by the city, so maybe this is a question for the city.
We think this can be built this summer, so if we get permits in early summer, by the end of summer, we should have this thing pretty well knocked out.
You don't currently have all the money, though.
Right. Well, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at what we do. If we get into that situation, we think we'd probably be able to get a loan against future donations.
And that would be the Rotary Club pursuing that?
Well, yeah, the Rotary Club would get it going to a loan agreement probably with a member, because it would be unsecured, but it would be with the promise of future donations, just to get us over the hump and get us done. But we're pretty close, and we think we'll be able to pull it off.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I was able to go look at the site and see the renderings and details with two Rotarians, Ms. Dosh and Mr. Decker, and I really appreciated the care they took, and all the Rotarians who are involved in this project, in making it not be this huge, grandiose thing, make it fit into the landscape, make it accessible. And I could see from their materials that you listened to the concerns of people and really did your work with stakeholders across the board, which I appreciated. And also to see the work that you've done already on Cap Santa, that trail from the bottom back to the top is really, really wonderful and done in a tasteful, fitting way. It's not this huge blasted-through trail. Like, everything has been done with great care and planning, and the commitment of your members to raise that kind of funding in this kind of economic climate, and that there's a real, real need. So again, I appreciate the increased accessibility that we don't have up there, and also what you've done with the trail for people who do want to get up under their, you know, on their feet, and also then tying that in with the east side trail that's going to be constructed. So that gives a lot of different options for a lot of, a lot of different people, and also, this is, this will be great for strollers, and so there just are a lot of benefits, and I just really appreciate all the work that you've done to get it to this point.
Well, appearing before the Park Advisory Commission certainly helped over the six years. I think if I would have put our very first proposal up on the screen today, I'd be super embarrassed, let's just put it that way.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, so I was someone who was Rotarian for a number of years and have stepped back in the last year, I saw some of those previous proposals, and this is much refined and really beautiful, and really fits into the landscape. So I know that it took a lot of effort and patience, but I think that this product is far superior than the initial designs. And bringing it in front of council because of the LTAC request, I think was just really, to me at least personally as one of the council members, making sure the public understood what this project was, so that they could see, because there was a lot of mixed understandings or assumptions that have been going on. And when we talk about a $75,000 ask, that's a large chunk of change for LTAC funds for one year and one project. But I'm really excited about it. Ms. Moulton mentioned the strollers, and that's also another thing, and just having it safe for little kids, you don't really want them walking past a boulder over the side. So this really makes it a nice place to run around, but still have lunch or have a snack and things like that. And, you know, my dad walks his dog on that trail at least two or three times a week, and really appreciates it, so I know that that's been a great improvement. So, yeah, and I will say to Ms. Richardson, my mom remembers being a little kid and being up there when her uncle went missing on a boat with her mom and looking for them. So it's been a while. My mom's very young, but probably closer to 70 years, 65, 70 years. So anyway, so thank you for all of you guys coming, and I think this is a really, a great project that will benefit not only tourists, but also our community at large.
All right, any other questions for council? Again, the question before the council is approving the funding for this project.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I appreciate the work Rotary has done on this, I appreciate the work that Tom and Vicky have put in, in terms of meeting with council members, meeting with me. I've been to the top, looked around with the plans in hand to see basically what this is going to look like, and all the trees you're not going to take down as part of the project. I appreciate that most of the wall is relatively small, and that it is a low-profile project, because again, as I think Cleveland, Ms. Cleveland McGrath mentioned, earlier designs were bigger, and I do think Rotary took into account some of the very early feedback from a number of years ago about, we don't want to see it from downtown, you know, we're not interested in something that is really expensive to maintain, any kind of bridge structure or something like that. I don't think we lose any trees as part of this project that aren't already dead. So I think, I think it's going to be a good project up there. I don't perceive that we are going to get a lot of visitors up there as a result, and I'm not really interested in sending scores of tourists up there. I think this is much more valuable for the residents of Anna Cortis than for visitors. This side of the project is going to be so much enhanced, I tend to think that we should be looking at enhancements to the other side as well, not on this scale, but just to prevent somebody in a stroller or wheelchair from rolling off as you try to make your way to the bench, just cleaning up the edge on the other side, I think we should be looking at that longer term. And I think one of the most important things here is the accessibility that it provides, not just for people in wheelchairs, but for people who are nearing the stage where they might need a wheelchair. I mean, until you're in that state, you may, not everyone may appreciate how important that is. So this is a good project. It's also a relatively small amount of money that is asked from public coffers, it's, the amount is $75,000, that's what LTAC recommended. The amount that you requested was a little higher than that, but I think we're constrained to what LTAC recommended. My suggestion, however, I know we have an engineer's estimate for this project, and we don't have bids yet because it hasn't been put out to bid. Maybe it comes in lower than the engineer's estimate. My suggestion would be that LTAC funds be spent last, because we do have a big capital project for our lodging tax funds coming up. And my suggestion is that we put that in the resolution authorizing the lodging tax money, that we're authorizing the 75K, but if the project amount is less than we anticipate, that lodging tax money be spent last. And then also, I tend to think we should put a time limit on it. If we spend this money this year, I think that's great. If this project doesn't proceed until next year, I'm less certain that we want to spend lodging tax money on it. Just encourage both the club, the Parks Department, and your donors to understand that, you know, we want to, we want to see this project come to fruition sooner rather than later, and sometimes with the threat of loss, there is the inclination to move a little faster. So those would be my two suggestions for provisos on this money, and I certainly look forward to enjoying this fall.
We've discussed that at the club, council member Walters, and we are comfortable with this stipulation that the LTAC money be spent last. Just because of uncertainty on permitting, we're a little less comfortable with saying it all has to be done this year, but according to the schedule that planning has given us thus far, and accounting for some of the slippage that's occurred for the notice upcoming on Wednesday.
And maybe some buffer on that, too. But typically, our lodging tax awards are for the calendar year. This need not necessarily be constrained to that, but typically, then, they do end and they move on, so I would like to see some constraint, and maybe that's 12 months from now, or something like that.
Okay. We would be comfortable with, we would definitely be comfortable with that, 12 months from now. 12 months from now. Anybody else? I mean, I think what I'm hearing from council, obviously, there's support for this project overall, so that's great. That certainly helps with my staff moving forward and continuing the work together. But I do need some sort of...
Mayor Miller.
Yes, Mr. Fantini.
With the stipulations that Mr. Walters included about it being spent last and also maybe putting a 12-month timeline on it, I enthusiastically recommend that we approve the funding, or motion that we approve the funding for the 2024, approve the funding for 2024 as approved by LTAC.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I would prefer that we do it by resolution because we approve all the other lodging tax awards by resolution or contract.
So we could bring you a resolution next week or the week after? That's acceptable to council?
Okay, I'm getting ahead nods, but thank you. I appreciate the motion, Mr. Fantini, because, you know, I like to move things along. So, but we'll bring a resolution back with those, with that detail. But I think you certainly heard from the council that you have support. And from me, yeah, sorry, I'm not making as many lunches as I used to, but proud member of Rotary and Rotary and a proud partner as a city, partnering with Rotary on not just this project, but so many, so many projects around the city. We could not do all the great stuff without that support. So thank you to my fellow Rotarians on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is 6B. This is Fire and Emergency Services 2024 Department Update. Chief Harris.
Get this really close tonight. All right. Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. Tonight, I just want to take a few minutes to talk about the AFD, where we're at today, where we've been recently, and where I believe we're headed in the near future. First, I was going to talk about, over the, currently, we have 37 career staff members. Of those 37, 22 of us have been here for less than three years. And with that, it's kind of a new department. Our leadership has changed, our intern, or the lieutenants have promoted a captain. We have a whole bunch of things going on. And we kind of feel like our new culture is developing, and that kind of deserves a new mission and value statement. So we've been working on this, and it's been way more difficult than I thought it was going to be. But we've had a lot of input from a lot of personnel. I won't read it to you. I'll let you read it. But the two things in there that are really a big deal to me, I love the whole statement, but we're really pushing the commitments to service and excellence. And I really kind of feel that defines who we are, how we're doing business. I'm really proud of the work that your firefighters are doing out there every day. I know that when I go home at 5:00 o'clock or if I'm out on the weekend, good decisions are being made, and everybody's pushing from a service-oriented perspective. And it's been amazing. It's only going to get better. This will be officially rolling out at our April 12th award ceremony, but I wanted you guys to see it first before we move on. A quick look back at 2023. Obviously, call volume is a big driver in our decision-making process, and we talked about it a lot last year during the Proposition 1 information. Since then, the last year in 2023, our calls increased again by 6.7% for a total of 4,609 last year. They continue to be about 80% EMS. Last year, there were 64 fire calls total, and a concerning number to me there. And we've been lucky they haven't been significant, but 55 hazmat calls. And the reason it's concerning is we have very limited hazmat abilities, and we're looking into that. I've been, I've had a few preliminary discussions with the Marathon Refinery to talk about a partnership. They have a pretty robust hazmat capability and getting better. Coincidentally, they're also working to improve theirs, and I believe that's going to pay off for us long-term. Just a few of the notable events from 2023. Obviously, Proposition 1 was a big deal. We got eight new firefighters, and we'll be deploying that second unit still on July 1st of this year. Another program we entered into was a partnership with the Department of Defense called Skill Bridge. And that's where active-duty members, as they transition to civilian life in their last three to six months, can basically do an internship if they're interested in, it's not just fire departments, but we signed on as a fire department. But we've had four total members that have come through. One found that motion sickness caused him to prompt an ambulance and decided to go back to the Navy. But we've hired one here. Marysville hired one full-time, and we have one more that just started the program about two weeks ago. So so far, it's been very successful, something I'm really pleased with. We also ran last year, we're in the West Gadget Volunteer Fire Academy, tremendous amount of work from our staff, internal, our training chief, and multiple instructors throughout the fire department, which turned out eight solid volunteers for Anacortes and another three or four for Districts 11 and 13 on island. We also went through about three months of online training with about five days of hands-on, called Calm the Chaos, an ICS training, ICS and scene management. Previously, we were using a program called Blue Card. It didn't really fit our needs, so we adjusted a little bit. It's just making, it's taken quite a bit of our training time, but it's making a big difference in how we do business on the fire ground. We also ran a rope ops technician, excuse me, level academy for both our staff and also partnered with Burlington and Mountain Vernon. You'll see that it's kind of a theme as we go through. It's really working out well for all of us to be having the same level of training. We have the expertise out here on the island. We do a lot of technical rescues, but the ability to go inland and have personnel over there and not having to send eight or 10 from here is a big deal. So pretty excited about that as well.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Sorry to interrupt, Chief, but I'm curious. So Calm the Chaos ICS training, what does ICS stand for?
Incident Command System.
Okay, so is that for, like, natural disasters or things of that nature?
So, yeah, so sort of. So it's the same process, like the NIMS ICS that you've probably taken in the past. It takes that and expands on it, but also this was specific to structured fires and how we manage incidents at the local level. Yeah.
You're not going to try the NIMS acronym? National Incident Management System?
National Incident Management System, yeah.
I'll give it a shot.
Nailed it. Let's talk a little bit about 2024. So 2024, I'm kind of treating as a year of consolidation. We did a lot of new things last year. This year, because we did all of those new things, we're kind of holding that ground and getting our new personnel trained, getting our new units deployed, and really getting good at what we're doing right now. Moving a little slow tonight. Let's talk about, hopefully, it'll back up here in a second, but talk about the academy. So I know that as we transitioned with the Proposition 1 employees, we hired eight new with the last batch starting, well, actually, the last one starts on April 1st. We have six currently in academy. It would have cost about $75,000 to send them all down to North Bend. When they got back, they would have had to spend quite a bit of time getting oriented to the Anacortes Way. Instead, and I'll be honest, it's been a tremendous amount of work and not as inexpensive as I had hoped, but we've run this academies from January 1st graduations on, or January 2nd graduation is going to be April 12th. They've had all those weeks of solid training. It's brought our department together, brought our instructors, tremendous amount of effort from everyone involved inside the department. And the recruits have gotten, in my opinion, far better training than they would have gotten at this state because it's smaller. They get more repetitions in an eight-hour day than they would have with, say, 28 classmates at North Bend. But more importantly, they got to learn our system, our ways, our people, and also the specifics. They don't get wild land at the State Academy. They don't get extrication at the State Academy, and they don't get technical rescue and things like that. So we're able to include all of that. Again, it's been a ton of work, but it's going to be well worth it. Just wrapping up, next week, they're doing their state certification testing, and then two weeks of EMS orientation, and then they'll be out doing the job. So that's good news. Been a long process also getting our new aerial in service. As you recall, we ordered this thing back in, I believe, January of 2022 or somewhere close to that. This was hit this morning. That's the photo. So believe it or not, though, it is still scheduled for delivery the first week of June. We're planning on being back for final inspection, a team from the fire department and the shop will be back to kind of give it a fine-tooth look over, hopefully, right around the 20th of May, and it'll be here in June. So we think. As you recall, last year, again, our shop built this brush 29. Last year, we utilized it locally. But I mentioned that one of the primary reasons we wanted it was to get it out on state deployments. And what that means is just a reminder, when our neighbors anywhere in the state have a wildfire that's threatening structures and is above their capabilities, the Washington State Patrol activated the mobilization process, which we've not participated in the past. It's good for the city in the sense that it gets our firefighters that well-needed experience before that ever happens here on one of those days, and also all expenses are reimbursed, all overtime's reimbursed. We get paid for the hours that the truck is in use. So in the end, it'll be a no cost or potentially even a profit for the city. Just want to talk a little bit. I know last week, there were some questions brought up about the EMS levy that I want to try to answer a little bit with a little bit more detail tonight. And then also, as we gear up for the 2026, I believe, comp plan and six-year plan, we'll be working through that over the next few months. So I wanted to let you know what I'm thinking, and then it's a political decision, and so we'll be looking for input. I'll be working with the committees in a smaller level, but wanted to kind of let council know what we're thinking there. One of the questions that was brought up was whether the documents that were how we produced the 44 cent number. And I don't know what's going to come, excuse me, the 47 cent number. I don't know what'll come back from the county. I know that I was a part of multiple meetings between the fire chiefs and department directors where we talked this all out. It was proposed at a lower rate. Most, well, all directors, including myself, argued for a higher rate for a number of reasons. And I want to just talk about some of those here, just in detail. So our last ambulance we purchased in 2020, cost 243,000. We're looking at hopefully two new medic units over the next two years. They're going to be between three and 330. So that's just one example of rising costs, all much smaller dollars overall. Fuel's raised by about 50% from 23,000 in 2019 to 37,000 in 2023. We don't know where that's going to go in the future. Also, here in Anacortes, our EMS salaries have changed from 1.7 million in 2019 to 3.0 million in 2024. I just wanted to point out, though, that does, that's not necessarily apples to apples in the sense that we have increased our staff in that time, but that staff increase was due to the same call volume that's pushing all the other expenses that we're talking about. So I wanted to include both. Individual salaries and benefits are up about 20% over that time, but overall, we've nearly doubled our amount here in Anacortes. Kind of the simple, we've talked about this quite a few times in different contexts, but the 1% annual increase can't keep up with those rates, and this levy is subject to that same rule that the city levy and all levies. I was also kind of asked what specifically will Anacortes see. One thing, so there's been, and the numbers aren't official, there's been, early on, when we were back at the 44 cent mark in proposals, there was a formula out there that's based on AV call volume and population. This seemed very fair to me. Pretty much everybody, there were some tweaks that we were making suggestions on, but overall, it seemed like a reasonable approach for how the levy will be dibbied up once passed regardless of the percentage or, excuse me, the sense that it's passed at. One bit of, one reason that can't be answered well is from the EMS office standpoint on, you know, what will the agency see, is the way the contract reads, and we're actually, we're redoing the contract as we speak as well. They go hand-in-hand, the six-year contract with the six-year levy. Because right now, it's in county legal review, and then it'll come to our legal review. Overall, I'm pleased with the contract. No major changes, it's a little bit simpler. But really, the gist of it is, we are contracted to provide a service. They don't really care how we do it. So, because, for example, the four cities, we all do very different models. We cross-staff three stations. Mountain Vernon cross-staffs one station, but staffs other full-time medic units, Burlington staffs, all out of one station, but a truck, ambulance, and a medic unit. So we all do it different to accomplish the same tasks to meet our own needs in geography and call volume.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Another acronym check, please. What is AV?
I think that's assessed value.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Assessed value, so they, sorry.
Yep, that's it. The, so again, is, it's a little early, but I wanted to get some concepts out. Once the numbers are finalized and once we know that the levy is passed, and as we roll into our workshops and budget presentations in the spring and summer, I certainly have proposals into what that influx of cash could mean to the Anacortes Fire Department. And I just wanted to kind of let you, let you see what I was thinking here. Obviously, there's things in our capital plan that need to be funded still. The ones specific to EMS are in our, in our station upgrades, adding, there's a, there's a system just being adopted at the county level called Locution, which runs through fiber as opposed to over the radio waves. It allows for customization inside the station and will get much sooner and more reliable notification of calls. Again, that works hand-in-hand with that reduced response time. That's important. We've talked last, last fall about the fourth medic unit, taking our reserve unit and replacing it with a new one that's in the ERNR. So that was, again, a plan for hopefully the 2025 influx of money. The other thing, so I'm still working off of, even though we're coming up on the new six-year plan and comp plan, I'm still working off of Resolution 1946 and the 2016 six-year plan that was based off of 2015 data that really called for nine firefighters on duty a day and an inspector. We made huge progress towards that last year, but I'm still using that as my roadmap. And with that, I'll be making proposals in line with that resolution as the budgets come forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
On your first bullet there, the question about the formula, is that formula, as expressed in the old contract or the new, based on the assessed value and population of the jurisdiction or the service area?
So in the old contract, there really doesn't seem to be a formula, and no one seems to remember. It seemed to almost be a guess as to how it was applied. But no, it applies. So it's the AV of the jurisdiction. We've had some discussions about whether or not we're going to be able to include the area. The problem with the area is the way we're doing business now with AVLs, there's no bright line as to what's our area. It's closest unit, as Mountain Vernon moves units, or we moves units, or Burlington, it changes, but yet that AV has to go somewhere. I agree. And those are the things that we're working through the process. As of right now, I believe the number I seen was based purely on city of Anacortes back in the, several months ago at the 44 cent range. It was based on Anacortes only.
And I suppose that that has some basis. But also, the distance that we have to travel on a regular basis, I take your point about not being able to clearly delineate the service areas, but the distance that we need to travel on a regular basis to serve the area that is generally perceived to be our service area, that would seem to be a kind of a key factor that would be great if it were in a formula as well.
No, I agree.
Because it affects the cost of doing business, right? It affects the cost of providing the service. And certainly, I remember conversations from 10-plus years ago about how we just have always felt like we've been short-changed in these formulas and in these negotiations at the countywide level, which is the reason I asked the questions last week.
Yeah. And kind of the reason that the formula, even as is, was reasonable to me is, one, obviously, AV matters to our Anacortes residents that are paying particularly, I mean, it's a high percentage here that's getting distributed around the county. But the important thing to me is that, so since population and call volume are both included, they're very, very related. So almost the call volume's almost double in the formula. So that area that you're talking about, and it's basically La Conde to Bayview, and then this way is pretty much our normal response area, we capture the call volume for the distribution of total levy funds. So, I mean, I agree that that does matter, but all the money's still coming into the pot, and we're taking our share versus by call volume would be how I would say that.
Okay. I take your point, though. It'd be very interesting to see that formula without maybe assessed value in it.
Yeah, so the AV is very beneficial to us, but, yeah, it is. Any other questions on the levy before I move on a little bit? And I'll work with Director Polonio to get some more detailed answers as soon as possible back to you from his perspective and on his end. So I just want to talk about a little bit is, again, so we're getting ready to start meeting and making plans for the, for the next comprehensive plan. And with that, internal is a six-year plan for concurrency from the fire department. But I know it's been a number of years, at least since I have not talked about locally adopt or adopted standards or standards, level of service standards in my time here. So I know it's been a little bit. So I just kind of want to remind everybody what we're dealing with. In FPA 1710 is the career fire department deployment standard, which is what we are. And it calls for 17 firefighters within eight minutes to a single-family dwelling, 28 within eight minutes... eight minutes to an apartment building, and then EMS, the first unit within five, and ALS within eight. For us, that's a little bit mute, because all of our units currently are ALS units. 1720, if we were inclined, we could make an argument, because we do maintain some volunteer staff, but not usually at a percentage high enough to qualify, and we could use a 1720 standard, but it's still in the, in the urban population density, which we are, it still calls for 15 firefighters within nine minutes. Back in 2016, we adopted, the City of Anacortes adopted our local standard, based on 2015 data, which was 3,200 calls and a population of just over 16,000. And this is how it reads, first engine with it with three firefighters within seven minutes 90% of the time, the total effective response force of 12 fires within 11 minutes 90% of the time, EMS units arriving within five minutes 90% of the time, and then in prevention, one annual inspection for all occupancies and two for high risk every year. Just want to talk a little bit about how we stack up against that standard today. So last year, I went through, and unfortunately, our system doesn't pull this out readily, so I had to do it by hand, which is why you're only seeing one year's data here, it's a little bit time-consuming. But if you take, we had what I would call a working structure fire inside the city limits eight times last year. And by working structure fire, I mean, we asked for a second alarm or greater, which means we wanted as many people as we could get. So I didn't feel it was fair to present all the small ones, like a cooking fire that gets dispatched as a building fire, and we canceled the other units, we're not looking for more than the six or seven. You'll see there, our first engine was on scene within seven minutes, seven of the eight times, or 88%, very pleased with that. That one outlier was an early morning fire out on Furcrest, which is kind of the one spot in town we really can't reach that rapidly, and a 6:00 AM fire, it is slower to get folks up and out and moving, takes a few extra seconds. So overall, very pleased with that. We had 63% of the time, I think five out of eight, we had three firefighters in that first engine, that surprised me. We've had a pretty good, since we've been doing some hiring and expanding, we've had three on duty more often, and our part-timers have been helping out with that number. That was also higher than I expected, and pleased with that. That's the last of the good news across there. So at the 11-minute mark, we hit that one time, we had 16. The reason I highlighted that one is a little bit of an anomaly, in the sense that the entire department coincidentally had been doing rope rescue training, Mount Erie was just traveling back into town in convoy when the fire occurred. So we got there with a lot of people really quick, but it's not the norm. It was a very interesting set of circumstances that put us there. You'll see, though, the other apartment fire down on 30th Street next to the bottom, we ended up with a total force of 29 firefighters. That took, which was awesome, but you'll see there were still only eight within that 11 minutes. As the rest are coming, we had a big response from Mount Vernon, Burlington, we had a, and we had a lot of help eventually, but not in that short timeframe. Overall, we averaged 14 total of all timeframes. EMS response, you'll see, we at the, we were on scene under five minutes 60% of the time, those have been getting better, but fairly consistent. Our actual 90% fractile would be 801 for last year. Again, that's across all, doesn't matter where they're coming from, and the reason that gets driven down is when those overlapping calls, when there's two calls at once, and say Med 16 from Skyline is coming in to the middle of town or worse to get to those calls, it drives those numbers up. Our average time, you'll see, was 440 last year, four minutes would have been kind of what we're shooting for there as an average, but not bad overall. One thing that you see, 2023 inspections, currently in our system, we have 1,000 even occupancies, we inspected 113 of them. That one we can control, I was a little displeased with myself, actually, when I saw that one, so that's something we've been working on, we're currently working. There wasn't a great, there was a migration, we changed reporting systems a few years ago, and things didn't come across cleanly. So right now, we're doing kind of a physical approach, walking the, the business areas, getting every assist, every business inspected slowly and into the system and updated, names have changed, all those things, so we're working through that. So I'm expecting much closer to 50 or 60% for 2024. Another thing, so as we kind of go past the next couple of years and go past what I talked about the last comp plan, and trying to fill out the Resolution 1946, to keep, so we've averaged over the last 10 years, it was 6.7% rise in call volume last year, it's averaged 5.5 over the last 10 years. At that same time, population's only increased by about 14%, so that's not necessarily, doesn't really correlate. So really, we're, there's, we're anticipating that that, it's, it's pretty steady rise, that it just continues for the foreseeable future. If, if that is the case, our projected call volume at the end of the next six-year plan would be 7,000 or up another 50% from 2023. So that's where we're, we're looking for council guidance eventually in how we make these plans and what we're doing. So again, our effective response force, we asked for 12 firefighters within 11 minutes, so does that mean we need 12 firefighters at least on duty to get there? My opinion is, is yes, it does. Our partners are too far away to help us. As we deploy four and five units, our current response chief, we're at home, I come from home at nighttime, and the assistant chiefs, we share that, that becomes more cumbersome and less effective the bigger we get and the more calls we're running, so something to be considering in the future, our BC positions. And as call, again, as call volume rises, it's still about 60% in the downtown corridor, so does that require a second unit at Station 1? Those are the midterm things we're looking at for, for growth. If you take that same 5.5% a year out to the end of the comp plan at 2045, it'd be around 15,000 calls, and I don't even know what that means yet. So we're doing the research right now as to where do those calls occur, where's our growth really occurring, how much is MJB going to drive those, all those kind of things, does it require new stations, new units, new personnel? Those are all questions that we'll be working to answer over the next year or so. That is my presentation, happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions for the chief? Any member of the public? Okay, I see one hand raised, so come on up. Yep, sorry, yeah, I know you can't see behind you, but yeah, that's you, come on.
Yeah, on your second slide, you showed the bar chart showing the increase, you know, call volume or incidents, looks like about 5% to 7% annually trending up. And then the pie chart showing the cause by nature, EMS about 80% being the predominantly, you know, for the cause. Is, the question is, do you see the increase projected into the future years still climbing at 5% to 7% slope? And how about our population growth? Are we following similar, you know, trend? And, and also assumptions, you know, what kind of assumptions to support that growth? Second is, with the pandemic, COVID, you know, winding down to a flu, and do you still foresee the EMS calls, you know, per population in Anacortes with this trend from the, you know, local health service department? So would like, appreciate comment on that.
So the rapidly rising call volume is one that's still, I won't say it boggles me, but it doesn't match any particular, there's no objective statistic to hold that to, which is one of the concerns and one of the problems that we have in making these projections. Trying to get back to that chart, sorry. So with that, so because it's been about the same over the time, and about that average of 5.5%, and last year was even more at 6.7, yeah, we're anticipating that it continues to rise at that rate for a while. I do believe that at some point, that begins to level out, there was, I don't have it in front of me, there was a population, I believe it was 22,000 and change at the 2045 mark.
Yeah, I think you got, you got that number, that's, that's about right.
Sound right. But because, because it hasn't correlated with population growth, I can only assume that it will continue to not correlate with, with population growth, but a little bit of that'll change from year to year as we see actual trends start to flesh out. As far as the COVID response, of course, calls dropped off quite a bit during COVID, doesn't really reflect here nicely, but it slowed way down. You'll see there wasn't much of a change between 2018, 2019, or even 2020. But you'll see here, now that we're pretty much completely out of the pandemic in '22 and '23, we took large jumps again. And again, I don't have a great explanation for it, it's part culture, it's part lack of access to medical care, sometimes folks use EMS as primary care providers because there aren't enough doctors in the area, and I don't know that that's going to get better or either.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Have you done any analysis, call volume to age of our population? We have 30% of people over 65, starting to rival some well-known retirement communities. Is that, is that a correlation that, or that you have been able to find? Or have you looked for it?
Yeah, so we have, actually, I have a, I have a graph, right now, we're, we're running all those analyses right now, that one's been done, and there's no, it's been, yes, it's going up in every age group, but it's going up in every age group at almost the same. You'll see, I'll present it next, next time, an opportunity, maybe at some of the committees, it's very interesting. Of course, right about the 80-year-old mark is our highest call volume, and it goes slowly, and then it spikes between 75 and 85, but it's been almost the same spike, I have five years' worth of data on that, and it's been almost identical every year.
The next level, though, is how many people in each of those cohorts, right? In each of those age brackets.
Right, and that'll be part, so no, I don't have that data yet, it's my understanding, I was, actually, it was at a, I think at a North Star meeting, they talked about, we're going to continue to rise in age slowly in Skagit County as a whole for about the next 20 years, 20 or 25, it was, and I don't know how they determine that, but that's the only information I have on that. But that'll be part of our long-term analysis for the actual comp plans, this was just kind of a primer and a heads up for, for what we're thinking about.
I think all of us will continue to rise in age. It's the idea.
Fair enough, I meant median age, median age will continue to rise for a little bit, okay?
All right, any other questions for the chief?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
So I just had a question also about this pie chart. So you break down kind of like the percentages of the types of calls and everything, and I just from, there's 12% that are canceled calls? Is that just folks that call back and say no, or like, what, or is that made up of maybe other municipalities asking us to come help, and then we don't, like, we don't need to go, or what are those?
That's, it's a variety of things, and I can have more specific breakdowns in that, but it say, it's a motor vehicle accident, but law enforcement gets on scene and it's non-injury, so we cancel. Or yeah, go into other jurisdictions, every, now and again, they'll call back before you even arrive, and the caller from that one has changed their mind, that's not common, but it does happen sometimes.
Okay.
But it's usually some variety of those other, yeah.
Okay, and then my other question was going to be, with those percentages, are we seeing, like, as the amount of call volume goes up, are we seeing those percentages stay pretty relatively the same, or are you seeing certain areas increase more than others?
It's fairly consistent, and I wish I would have pulled multiple years here, the one that jumped out, I mean, this year was the hazmat incidence, I do think that one is a little bit higher than it has been in years past, but overall, they're about the same. There's, in the smaller groups and fire calls, because there's relatively few, a few calls can make a significant difference in how it compares to the other small calls, but I can get that information and get it out to council. We do have an annual report, hopefully, I was hoping to have it published by today, but hopefully in the next week or so, and there's, there's much deeper detail in some of that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Quillen?
I was curious about, do you have any information about the community paramedic? One of the intents, the intentions with having that additional position was those frequent flyers kind of addressing some of those underlying issues and helping them find services that they need. How, can you speak to that at all, or would that be coming in another presentation?
So, I can speak to it just a little bit, but I'll tell you, so actually, I pulled, I actually, I put this up to remind me, but there's a picture there of our ART up in the top corner there. I pulled them out of this presentation because I kind of felt that warranted its own presentation, so I was going to work with, next time we have a light agenda, hopefully the next two, three weeks, I was hoping to put, to put the ART up here for that. I will tell you that, as just recently, though, it's been, this, this year has been tremendously effective, the overall, at least in the short term, I won't say they've worked themselves out of a job, but the, the amount of folks that the outreach team is seeing is significantly smaller. I don't have the numbers, but it's, it's noticeably different, and to the fact where, Steve's been able to return to his more traditional community paramedic role much more frequently than he was in the years past, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, I was thinking of that question too, but I'd never like to put my chief on the spot there. But we, we know the community paramedic has reduced some of the significant numbers of 911 calls, and whether that's going to affect that, that trend or not, it's probably in there somewhere, so.
Yeah, he's got tremendous data that he'll get up here for you shortly.
And then, and then one other question, just kind of going off of the aging population and the, the percentage of our population compared to the rest of the county is older and will continue to be older for the foreseeable future. So one of the challenges is that EMS has to transfer folks, correct, from nursing homes to hospitals and back and forth? Is that accurate? And is that going to be factored in when we talk about the countywide refunds or funding?
Sure, so for, for, currently, no. So currently, at least in the Skagit County EMS system and Anacortes Fire Department, we don't routinely do interfacility transfers, what I'd call a transfer. So when someone, when a nursing home calls 911, that's us, we go respond and bring them back. As far as return trips to home or, or a transport from Island Hospital to a distant hospital, unless it's an emergency, like an acute surgical candidate, or most commonly, someone having an active STEMI or a heart attack, we take those as 911 calls and handle it. Routine non-emergency transports are handled by private ambulance that comes from either Bellingham or from Snohomish County on a delayed time and comes up and get them. Because yeah, that would actually be a whole nother, a whole nother deal with a much, a huge impact on our call volume, and mostly time out of service, because even though it's one call, it takes hours, and it's, yeah, that's not something we're super interested in doing.
Mayor?
Mr. Walters?
Have we looked at alternative models for stepping up the fire inspections? I've mentioned this a number of times, and I am concerned that especially in our older buildings in our downtown, if we get a fire going, it kind of won't matter how many firefighters you're able to get on scene.
Sure.
So 11% is not great, I mean, I guess it's better than a couple of years ago, when maybe we were essentially doing none. But alternative models might include hiring retired firefighters, putting the, the duty in a, in another department, like the planning department. How do we get from 11% to 100%, hitting, hitting the targets of every business inspected annually and the, the other set of the, whatever, whatever we call it, twice a year for the...
Oh, for the high-risk occupancies.
High-risk occupancies.
Yeah, so the only, my opinion, the only way to get to 100% is to have a, a full-time fire inspector, it is a full-time job.
If we had a full-time fire inspector, do we achieve that?
Yeah, yeah. There's really no, because that would be their primary job description versus anything else. And there's, even at 1,000 or say 1,200 with the duplicate, I don't think there's 200 high-risk, but even if there were, that's certainly well within a reasonable range. And at the same time, that person would be doing, we're also, so, right now, we're working through, to back up just a little bit tangentially, the way we're improving right now is just getting staff re-engaged, it was sort of inertia and, and habit, and there's really no excuse, but we just sort of, during COVID, we sort of stopped doing them, we had all this transition and change, and we just really never picked it back up. I thought we were doing a better job than that, that, that stat wasn't, like I mentioned, wasn't, I didn't find that awesome, but we're out doing them. At the same time, along with prevention, is the pre-fire planning, we just were starting that process, that gets the companies out doing more, because it's an inspection with a pre-fire plan. So like I say, we're already seeing that number trend up, hopefully significantly over the next couple of months, and again, but that, that won't get 100%, there's, it's not realistic. As far as the alternative models, yeah, we, we've talked about it a little bit, but those things all still cost, and personally, I would, if we're going to spend funds, I would rather have another firefighter slash fire inspector, someone who can do our job as well, inside the Fire Department. There was some, I did enter some discussions about a civilian fire marshal, for it's slightly less expensive, but at the same time, we lose oversight, we also lose potentially that expertise of where do we want FDCs, how do we want our sprinklers rooms aligned and things like that? So I see value keeping inside the Fire Department, but there are certainly other models out there, I can't disagree with that.
Anything else? All right, we will move on to item, thank you, chief. Item 6C, Resolution 3152, waiving competitive bidding requirements for water treatment plant retorque valve actuators. And that was just fun to say, I think. Mr. Rayo?
Mayor, council, good evening. Like the mayor said, this is a, a resolution to waive the competitive, competitive bidding process for ROR torque valve actuators, so general public probably doesn't understand what that piece of industrial equipment is, so if you think of your hose bib on your house, it has a... So if you think of your hose bib on your house, it has a, a wheel on it that you turn on and off, your hand is the actuator. So this is a mechanical piece of equipment. It has computer, computers, I think it does have computers in it actually. So we program it, we run it from a main central location. There's hundreds of these throughout the water treatment plant. The, the vendor is Beaver Equipment and they are a four-state territory for RORATORC. So they are the only vendor in which we could use to replace and find parts for the valve actuators that we have in the water treatment plant. That is all I really have to explain why. Then I know there's more information in your packet, but otherwise, that's kind of all I have to explain why we need to go with a single sole-source contract. There's no money involved with this decision. That's, each actuator is about sixty-five hundred dollars. Again, there's a hundred of them. We don't need to replace all of them or anything like that. But the actual cost of replacing them will come to council if it, you know, exceeds forty-five thousand.
Yeah, so just asking to a single source, which it seems to be, that's the single source.
Right.
Questions for Mr. Rayo? Except I still don't know how to pronounce their company name or whatever the, the RODO.
RORATORC.
Yeah, RORATORC.
Yeah.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
If we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve resolution thirty-one fifty-two. Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick. Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up on the item, item six D, and thank you all for patiently waiting. This is ordinance four zero seven five, amending the Anacortes Municipal Code to establish a definition and add regulations for short-term rentals in the commercial, central business district, marine mixed-use and commercial marine zones. This is a disgusting item, possible action, but that would require waiving city council procedure. So typically, this is a two-read evolution. And over to Ms. Grange. Didn't drag it out long enough for you to set up your slides.
Almost, thank you, mayor. I am getting that open right now.
And again, while you're doing that, I know I have a couple of folks signed up and I know a few folks want to address the council on this one.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council and members of the audience this evening. My name is Libby Grage and I am the Planning Manager in the Planning, Community and Economic Development Department for the City of Anacortes. And I'm happy to be here this evening to introduce proposed ordinance four zero seven five, which would create permanent regulations for overnight lodging, use of residential dwelling units in the commercial business district, commercial, or sorry, central business district, commercial marine mixed-use and commercial marine zones. And so just a quick overview of the, of my presentation and the topics that I'll cover, including introduction and context around this issue and how we got to this point. Go over the development of the proposed regulations, including, you know, considerations during that process and then also look at the specific proposed regulations. And then I'll summarize the community input that we've received to date and also the Planning Commission recommendation on, on the proposed regulations. And finally, the council action requested, which is no action this evening, of course. So, short-term rental. So first I wanted to just get a couple of terms and definitions out there for clarification. The term short-term rental, which is a lot easier to say than overnight lodging of residential dwelling units, is what I'll probably be using. And that is a, a term that's proposed to be added into the municipal code. So it's not a term that is currently included in the Anacortes Municipal Code. But in general, I think people understand short-term rental to mean rental of all or a part of a home for a fee on a temporary basis. Overnight lodging is a term and a use that is specifically defined in the Anacortes Municipal Code under nineteen forty, AMC nineteen forty-four point oh five oh. And, uh, short-term rentals are generally, have been interpreted to fit under this category, the overnight lodging category, which is defined as accommodations arranged for short-term stays less than thirty days. And those types of accommodations include in the category bed and breakfast, hotel motel and also, also a youth hostel. So this is a slide that shows how overnight lodging of residential dwelling units or short-term rentals are currently regulated in the City of Anacortes. So the first box here is table nineteen forty-one oh four oh in the municipal code. And this is an excerpt showing the overnight lodging category and in residential zones. And so what this is showing is that overnight lodging, all kinds of overnight lodging is not currently permitted in any of these residential zones, except for a bed and breakfast is permitted through a conditional use process. And a, a bed and
Mr. Walters.
It's probably worth pointing out anytime in your slide presentation that you mention it, that tonight's item is not about residential zones.
That's very true, yeah. Thank you. So down below here, nineteen forty-one oh five oh is the table that shows permitted, principal uses permitted in mixed-use and industrial zones. And these are the, mixed-use zones are the ones that we are concerned about tonight. And currently, the code does allow for all types of overnight lodging in the CBD, commercial, marine mixed-use and commercial marine zones. The city council in March twenty-twenty-three adopted ordinance four zero four six, which enacted a moratorium on the, on new overnight lodging use of residential dwelling units within these four mixed-use zones. Uh, this is an Anacortes zoning map that shows the areas that are affected by the moratorium. And they're kind of spread out all, all the way around the city, including the marine mixed-use zones over at Skyline and then over at Fidalgo Bay between Seventeenth and Twenty-Second Street. And then also another one over here by the Washington State Ferry Terminal, as well as the ferry terminal itself is in the commercial marine zone. And then the central business district is this blue color here. Commercial zone follows the Commercial Avenue corridor and a block or two on, on each side. The commercial marine zone down along Fidalgo Bay. And then finally, there's a little smidgen of commercial down at Sharp's Corner. So those are the areas that are affected by the moratorium and then also the areas that would be affected by the proposed regulations. So, um, just a little bit more background on the past legislative activity related to short-term rentals and overnight lodging. In twenty nineteen, the city council adopted some new development regulations, a major development regulations rewrite to implement the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan. And some of those, uh, some of the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan focused on increasing, increasing production of housing and specifically, you know, in close to services and, and transportation. And part of that ordinance made it easier for new residential development to occur in central business districts, marine mixed-use, CM and, um, commercial zone. And then also along with ordinance thirty forty is when the residential zones, short-term rentals were prohibited in residential zones. So that's been since two, twenty nineteen. And then I talked about ordinance forty seventy-six, which was adopted by city council in twenty-twenty-three. And the primary rationale for that moratorium was new, well, one of the impetus, impetus, impetuses of the, sorry, of the moratorium was that there was quite a bit of development that was developed under the twenty-nineteen regulation update. So the changes that were intended to increase housing production for people that live and work in Anacortes. There was quite a bit of townhouse and multifamily development that occurred under those new regulations. And some of those units were converted over to short-term rentals, which was a, a concern brought up by the community and seen as contrary to the city's goals and policies about housing development for people who live and work in Anacortes. So that was kind of a little bit of background about the, uh, the reasons for enacting the moratorium initially. Ordinance forty fifty-two was adopted by council on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. And that ordinance extended the moratorium and also adopted a work plan to develop permanent regulations. So since then, staff has been working on development of the proposed regulations. And as part of that, we've been looking at existing city plans, goals and policies, looked at available research on the topic of the impact of short-term rentals on local housing markets. Looked at existing housing conditions and future housing needs. Have discussed this item with the city council planning committee and received feedback from that group and finally, community feedback. So in reviewing the existing plans, policies and goals that this, that the city has, we looked at the comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned, that was updated in twenty sixteen with a variety of new housing goals that emphasized the importance of increasing housing production and housing availability for all income levels in the city. We also looked at economic development goals and policies, which talk about expanding lodging options and also enhancing tourism activities. And so there's, you know, throughout the comprehensive plan, you know, potentially competing housing and economic development goals and policies. You know, that could support the council's decision on which direction to go, either way. Also, staff looked at the Housing Action Plan, which was adopted by council in January of twenty-twenty-three. And that plan had a recommendation, a recommended action to balance the positive and negative impacts of short-term rentals by implementing basic standards and additional regulations as needed. And that document recommended relatively light measures due to the smaller amount of short-term rentals that are present in the, in the city. And then the document provided a list of potential regulations that the city could consider. City staff also looked at research and data that was available on the impacts of short-term rentals on the local housing market. And what, kind of the summary of, of what was found is that, well, it's not the primary cause of affordable housing problems. That experts believe that short-term rentals do have a negative impact on affordable housing at the local level, especially in high tourism communities. And that's because owners are incentivized to move their properties out of the long-term rental market and for sale markets and into the short-term rental market. Because in a lot of cases, there is economic benefit to, to doing that. You can make more money, you know, renting out a short-term rental for two weeks, the same amount that you could make, you know, for a month, monthly rental. So the research that we looked at also found that, uh, generally, the absentee landlords reduce the housing supply and it increases the housing costs for local renters. So as owners convert a short-term rent, or excuse me, a housing unit over to the short-term rental market, it reduces the city's overall supply of housing and impacts housing costs for other local renters. The research also showed that, or found that owner occupiers, so people who, you know, live in the residence that they are short, that they are renting out, either the, maybe a couple of rooms, that that did not impact the long-term rental market in the same way that a person who does not live in the home or, excuse me, own the home would. So this is just additional background information. In twenty-twenty-one, we received data about the number of listings in Anacortes for short-term rentals. And it found that there were ninety-three listings representing eighty-two unique rentals. And just, this was citywide, which again, we're, we're only talking about a couple of zones here this evening. And there were approximately, we think there are approximately twenty or fewer short-term rentals in the subject zones that we're talking about this evening. Some additional data that I think the council was emailed a couple of days ago or last week. We looked at total housing units in the city, occupied housing units, vacant units, and then the homeowner vacancy rate and the rental vacancy rate. The so the homeowner vacancy rate and the rental vacancy rate, according to the HAP, are quite, quite low. What you would typically want to see for a natural vacancy rate is approximately five percent for rentals and seven to eight percent for owner-occupied units. So we currently do have a very low occupancy, or excuse me, vacancy rate in the city, indicating a, a low supply and high demand. Finally, just an additional consideration when thinking about developing regulations for, that will impact short-term rentals. Considering the city's future housing needs and what that, what that looks like and how, what is decided today may, may impact the city's ability to city's ability to reach those housing goals. And so this is just, I think, you've all probably seen this before, but it's the initial planning allocations for housing units that are projected to be needed in the city of Anacortes through twenty forty-five to accommodate the projected population growth. And what this is showing is that approximately three thousand additional housing units will be needed over the next twenty years. And this has a breakdown of housing units that are projected to be needed by income band. Housing that is affordable to families that make eighty percent or less of the area median income is expected to make up, I think it's about seventy-three percent of the needed housing over the next twenty years. And something of, of note here is that the, the types of housing that are likely to be affordable to families with that income level are primarily multifamily-type development. And the zones that we're talking about tonight, the commercial CBD, marine mixed use, and commercial marine, are some of the only zones in the city where that type of housing can currently be built. Our four zone as well. So those are some of the things that staff looked at in developing the regulations and now the proposed regulations. The objectives for the regulations were developed through discussion with the council planning committee. And some of the objectives were to prevent housing from being taken off the long-term market, preserving the sense of community within existing and future neighborhoods, and allowing for economic gain by owners and residents. So in order to achieve those objectives, the proposed amendments to the regulations would add a new overnight lodging type and definition, so adding the term short-term rental to the commercial use regulations in the municipal code, prohibiting new short-term rentals in the commercial central business district, marine mixed use, and commercial marine zones, allowing existing legally established short-term rentals to continue operation, provided they maintain a current business license. The proposed definition for a short-term rental is "an overnight lodging use that is not a hotel or motel, or a bed and breakfast, in which a dwelling unit or a portion thereof is offered or provided to a guest for a fee for fewer than thirty, that should say days." Sorry about that. So that's the, the gist of the proposed provisions and what they would do. The amendments would not change the fact that the rental of dwelling units in these zones and throughout the city, for periods of longer than thirty days, thirty days or more, would still remain a permitted use. Bed and breakfasts would continue to be permitted, new bed and breakfasts. And so those are defined currently as existing single-family residents, residences that are owner-occupied, and up to six rooms can be rented in those. And then finally, hotel motel would also continue to be permitted use. This just shows the technical aspects of what it would look like. So we just insert short-term rentals under nineteen forty-four oh five oh, which is the overnight lodging category. And then we would add the definition, which I just went over. And then number two, here's the provision that would allow for lawfully established short-term rentals to continue operation, provided they maintain their current business So community input and the planning commission's recommendation, there was a, so the draft regulations were released in January, and there was a public comment, written public comment period advertised. City staff received fifteen comment letters from members of the public, and then we've received quite a few more since I put this presentation together. So you should have received a few of those via email from Greg, thank you. And then the planning commission held a public hearing on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And at that meeting, there were five people that testified. And I, I think I'll just be quick on this, because I think there's some folks here that probably will provide some feedback. But the community input themes that we've heard so far are questions about the data showing, showing the impact of short-term rentals on affordable housing, an assertion that the city should let the free market regulate short-term rentals via supply and demand. We heard a lot of, of commenters that felt like there were a lot of community benefits to short-term rentals that shouldn't be overlooked, including providing temporary housing options for individuals that might be in transition or families in emergency situations, also providing accommodations for traveling workers. There were a lot of people that had used short-term rentals in other locations and felt that it provided for, you know, an ideal fit for their family and the type of accommodation that was provided with separate rooms and a kitchen, and, and a lot of people liked that, liked to be able to have that. There is also the prospect of increased tourism and taxes for the city. Short-term rentals do have to pay lodging tax, and so that is always a consideration. And then finally, short-term rentals can provide a supplemental source of income for homeowners, residents, and investors. That can sometimes be important for people trying to, you know, make their own mortgage payment, you know, and, and sometimes that can be an important piece of, of being able to afford to live in Anacortes. And then finally, there was a common sentiment that existing short-term rentals should be grandfathered in or considered legal non-conforming use. Okay, so the planning commission, after hearing the public feedback and considering the staff report and all of the information given to them, ended up recommending adoption of the proposed amendments as presented by a vote of three to two. And they also provided a bonus recommendation, which was to consider allowing owners or resident-occupied short-term rentals in, in all zones, which would need to be part of a, a separate process. But they, they felt like that should be an op, an option available for the city's residents. Okay, so council requested action, so tonight, as I mentioned, there's no action requested by staff. This is a first read of the ordinance. But we will need to talk about addressing the moratorium, which does expire on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And so I'd like to just have you keep that in mind, and, you know, we'll need to make a plan for, for extending that or what, what comes next there. So the options with that could be holding a public hearing at the next meeting to extend the moratorium, and because the, a problem with the, with the timing and the dates and the publication of an ordinance if it were to be adopted by city council puts us past the expiration of the moratorium. So something that we just need to address. That's, that's it for me. So thank you for listening. I know that was long, and do you have any questions for me?
I'm sure there'll be questions, but maybe we get to the folks that have signed up first and then other, other folks that, again, I know council has received public comments, and thank you for arranging them nicely. That, that helps a lot. So it does help to get your public comments in early, so the council can, can see all the comments stacked up. But I do have folks signed up, so I'll start with those. And I've got Mary LaFleur up first. And thanks for everybody for your patience and as we do other city business.
Thank you, Mary LaFleur from Anacortes. And I have to say, I thought I would be here for public comment, which was more than an hour and a half ago. I'm not being paid to be here like you folks are, so I'm kind of thinking we should stick to public comment, because you've made us all a little more passionate, but you've lost some people. I understand that you're wanting to limit short-term rentals in Anacortes. And I'm speaking generally about all of Anacortes, not just the units you talked about tonight. I feel that this is an overreach of government on the taxpayer. Already in place is zoning CC and ours, which manage this. It is my home, and it is my choice. Nowhere in Anacortes should you limit the homeowner from making a choice who they have in their home. Do you want us to come to your home and limit who you can have spending the night in your home? I don't think so. We don't either. I know from being a past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce that there are many festivals, events, art and boat shows that come to our town. They not only bring tourists to spend money, but they also bring vendors. We do not have hotel capacity for all that. You guys know that. Many people in Anacortes have basements that go unused. I am one of those people. I would never rent out my entire basement, because I need room for people to come and stay that are in my family, they're my friends, they're people I want to allow there. But on the other hand, I realize that the refinery has shutdowns, we have these events, and that space is dead space that could be utilized to help somebody in the community out. And that's what we should be doing with our places. A lot of the places are built on a hillside where we want one level, because we're getting older, and we've got these basements. And you're never going to get my basement as a long-term rental, period. You won't. So you're not, you're taking from me an option to help you instead of what's right. I would consider the short term, but I would rather see, if you send them off our island to other hotels, they're not going to the Rockfish, they're not going to the Brown, they're not going to our stores, they're going to go close to where they see. So you're actually hurting our local businesses. If you want these events and you want these money to come into this town, you can't have both. You can't tell us what to do with our properties and then expect that you're going to get all these people coming here and you're going to have to send them somewhere else. It doesn't work that way. And we have snowbirds, they don't want to rent out their place all year. But the big issue really is the landlord-tenant acts. So like my husband, we just went through this a couple of years ago, they're in favor of the tenant, period. He spent fifty thousand dollars in lawyers and two years of complete frustration getting a woman out of his house that would not pay rent. She trashed the place. So that's why people don't rent out their homes. They don't have the ability to get rid of bad tenants. So until that changes, you're not going to get what you want. And, you know, I want to say from everybody here in Anacortes, I can't afford to live in Medina. They're not coming up with some affordable act for me to give up my million-dollar home to move to Medina. I can't afford to live there. I couldn't afford to live here for twenty-five years, my boat was here. I had to work harder. And I actually have pride of ownership living here, because I had to work for it. So you need to think about what you're bringing here. It's a small island, there's a lot of people, it's a tourist town, and you can't have it all. You've got to pick what you want. And you can't just import everybody here and have it work out, it's not going to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so we don't, we don't applaud, we don't do applause in council chambers, because we want to make sure to equally respect everybody's, everybody's opinion. So if you could please refrain from cheers and that kind of thing. All right, so next up, I have Jason Gould signed up. And again, because we're doing this as it comes, be respectful, everybody's time in three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jason Gould, Anacortes. I'd sent out an email last year and then mid, mid-year, and I still haven't had a response or a return of phone call from any of the council members, or an email. I have sent out a large email recently that explained the most updated data from John Coleman, which shows that we actually have a vacant house issue bigger than the short-term rental issue. There's, I calculate, when you add in the homes that are not being rented, over nine point eight percent of the total housing population is sitting in Anacortes vacant. And right now, we are standing here today to talk about point one seven of the total housing population in Anacortes, to see if we should grandfather in fifteen to twenty units, with a maximum potential of up to four hundred total housing units in the commercial zone. The, these housing units provide a mandatory and positive need for flexible housing to the community of, of Anacortes, for workers, for residents, for tourism, which is stated in the, the plan, the master plan here, the, which is, says it needs tourism, and we should have all types of housing. If you effectively do a ban in the commercial zone, you're literally killing short-term rentals, because there won't be any new short-term rentals. And it's natural for the housing to turn and sell, or maybe they turn into long-term rentals. Right now, it's all about supply and demand. The properties that are short-term rentals, many of them have transitioned into thirty-day-plus rentals or even one-year rentals, because there isn't that much demand for short-term rentals. So that needs to be considered. I went to the planning commission meeting, and they met, they met and voted without very many facts. So their recommendation was very un, with low facts, and, and I believe that if they had the additional facts that they got after the meeting, that they asked questions for to the planning department that they weren't able to get, they would have, the vote would have been different. It would have been a three-two, or even more. And then we wouldn't even be talking about it today. There is other concerns of the Fifth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, and regulatory taking. Are you going to compensate the people that are being told they can't rent their, their houses short-term, when you grandfather in the ones that can continue to rent their houses short-term? And those values of the, of the owners that are going to be continuing to rent short-term are going to increase substantially, while everyone else's property is going to be reduced. I think short-term rentals should be allowed in all areas, in all zones, because it is a residential use, and the Supreme Court has already, already been over it, and it's a residential use in nature. People are coming to sleep to, for leisure, and Anacortes is not a big party town. The amount of short-term rentals from twenty twenty-one, which you say is eighty-three, has actually decreased down to seventy-two right now, and some of those seventy-two are actually rented out long-term. So the data that you have is incorrect. We are on the way to having no short-term rentals eventually if you pass a ban.
So thank you, and I will confirm that the council has received your emails, and your, your inputs were also included in the packet with the staff responses, but certainly not some of the latest emails, but the council has received those emails. So as, as more folks want to, if they want to talk to council, again, you can, you don't have to speak for the entire allotted time, but you can just come up and, and say where you are on supporting this resolution or not supporting this resolution, if you, if you so desire. But yep, come on up, well, whoever, you stood up first, so come on up. That's why we try, try to sign in, it helps out, manage that, that's okay. We're happy to, happy to hear from you. And again, state your name and where you live.
Diane Sager, Anacortes. We were victims of a flood, and, and it was in June when we flooded, and we were out for months, and the home that we were, we were bounced around from hotel to hotel. from hotel to hotel because during the summer in Anacortes, there were not hotels. There's not enough places. So my mother and I and our pets were put from hotel room to hotel room multiple times in a month. And we were really lucky to find an Airbnb, or not an Airbnb, I'm sorry, a short-term rental that allowed us to stay, but we didn't have to sign a contract. We didn't have to be in contract for six months or a year and be, and be held to our insurance paying that because we had the ability to rent short-term. And I think that taking out short-term rentals, I think there's more of an impact that you're not seeing in the people that are victims to things like we were, like flooding. When we were bounced from hotel room to hotel room, there was no peace. You can't get centered. You can't get focused. We were without our own belongings. So in this short-term rental, they actually provided us even down to a toothbrush. Because when we got moved out, it was moved out quickly. So I think that there are people that are being unrepresented or underrepresented in this. I do believe that there is a strong need for this. If, if we would have had to go try to find a place to stay that says, oh yeah, you have to stay for six months or you have to, you know, contract to that situation, we would have still been bouncing from hotel to hotel. And the hotels at that point in the summertime were charging $400 a day. We were able to get in for less than half of that. So it not only helped our insurance paying out, but it helped us financially and, and in our, our mental health. The other thing is, is I have children that are athletes and we used to have to travel when we would stay at hotels, especially during those seasons of the, of the sports. When we were in hotels, you, you can't get quiet. You can't get focused. If you have a child that is handling themselves only like they are not a competitor, and I will hurry really quickly, not on a team, but an individual athlete, the noise in the hotel, you can't get peace. You can't find that even in an Airbnb. So when you're getting a whole home or a whole space that's really beneficial to your athletes, that's really beneficial to the underrepresented. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll have staff correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to make sure everybody, short-term rentals, we define that as less than 30 days. And looking for, yep, that's the head nod. Okay. And yep, come on up. And I think you know, you know the drill.
Good evening, council. I'm Tom Glade. I reside at 210 Mansfield Court, Anacortes. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Evergreen Islands. And I moved to what is a really beautyous city in the whole of the United States. Because I, when I got out of school, I lived in the bourbon skies of Los Angeles. And when I first moved there, there's Orange County to the south of LA County where I lived, it was all mostly orange groves and avocado groves. And when I left, they were all gone. There were condominiums and, and tract homes all there. So anyway, this, to me, is a very precious place. So about four years ago, Evergreen Islands came across this article in the, from the Arizona Central, which was a part of the USA Today network. And it's, the title is Sedona's Housing Woes Threaten Its Sense of Community. Some Blame Vacation Rentals. Residents in Sedona are struggling to find long-term housing in the city after a state law prohibited the city from regulating short-term rentals. And so Sedona attracts some 3 million visitors annually. In the high seasons, tourists outnumber this, pardon me, tourists outnumber the city of 10,500 residents by 3 to 1 ratio, according to the city councillor. Sedona had 300, 200 to 300 vacation rentals before the law took effect. Today, rentals have grown to more than 1,000 homes, or 20% of Sedona's total housing inventory. So based on this, this article, Evergreen Islands submitted a comprehensive plan amendment to take control of short-term rentals. And so we applaud your efforts to get hold of this problem that will diminish the stature of Anacortes. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else before I, come on up? And I, okay. So I got a couple of folks. All right. Well, we'll just, all the way in the back. Yep, you're next. You're up. And name and city, please.
Gary Sandberg, Anacortes. And I've been operating an Airbnb. I have two different properties. This is outside the city. And it's a, actually, it's a Montana fifth wheel. But if you look in Airbnb and the other short-term, you can rent almost anything. So we've been doing it for eight years and it's been a really great setup. Had people from all over the world stay with us. On the other hand, because, well, we bought the RV to use it and then I ended up being a full-time caregiver for my mother for two and a half years in town. And I ended up with our family home. In the interim, they put in this deal that you can't do Airbnbs in town, which is what we actually wanted to do with the house. The problem that I see in a long-term rental, my wife, her family, her mother had three rentals in town. As she got older, she had someone else take over her property management for her. That person put in some people that we could not remove from these rentals. So we went for about a year and a half of no rent. We had the police send us a note because they raided one of the houses. Drugs, child pornography. When we were in this place, all the rooms had locks on the doors on the outside, hasps to lock doors shut. When we finally got these people out, which took forever, the sheriff's department was there to change locks with us. Sheriff came out and said, don't go in the house. She said, I have been in houses with dead bodies with less flies than in this house. The plumbing had quit, so they just went on the floor. So when we finally cleaned it out, there was five 24-foot containers of trash removed from the place. They figured a cost of almost $200,000 to rebuild the house to make it habitable. So my thing of short-term rentals, these people are all vetted out for the most part. They're only there a short time. They can't screw the place up in that short time. And the fact that we also pay hotel tax, which comes into the city, if it was in the city, which rentals do not give you any tax in that I know of. So the whole rental thing, if there isn't a place to rent, well, hey, guess what? You don't get to move here. That's all. As the person was saying of Sedona, it's the same deal. They're landlocked. They can't build any bigger because they're in a park. So the space isn't there, the space isn't there.
Thank you. All right. I know I saw a couple other hands. Put your hands up if you're interested. Okay, right here in the front.
Good evening. Ooh, good evening, mayor and council, council members. I had an essay written, but I kind of jotted down to a few bullet points. I'm going to read off my phone.
All right. Give me your name and city.
Sorry, Ramina Dur, Anacortes. I'm going to read off my phone, so I apologize in advance. But if I miss a bullet point, I might not sleep tonight. So I am a real estate broker and I have been a property manager for 10 years now. And I do manage properties within the city limits. I specialize in flex-term rentals, so anywhere between one day to one year, you name it. When I speak to clients regarding Anacortes, I use two words to describe the city: beautiful and welcoming. This is, of course, based on my experience. My renters are out here in the city for work to explore the beautiful city and some even looking to relocate to Anacortes. Current rentals I manage are occupied with families, employees that build the very things you and I use on a daily, work industries that affect us on a daily, healthcare workers, or simply homeowners that are dealing with a remodel due to a pipe burst. I've seen it all. The traditional rental demands two months upfront deposits, which accumulate over $8,000 on average just upfront, just not affordable. Also add the cost to break their lease, given that majority of these workers are on a contract basis and cannot stay the traditional lease terms. Short-term rentals offer a more economical alternative, not only for the cost of the housing, but also day-to-day expenses. Not only do short-term rentals provide affordable housing upfront and throughout the stay, they also help provide income for Anacortes homeowners. I'm a mom of two and have not stayed at hotels since I've become a mom, except for the Great Wolf Lodge, but that's on demand for birthdays. Hotels and motels are a lot more expensive. They just don't work anymore. The affordability aspect is pivotal for those relocating or in search of permanent housing. The statement that some city councils have, have declared that individuals and families should reside in hotels if needing housing for less than 30 days, personally, I feel that's very inconsiderate. Another point I heard in the last city council meeting by a homeowner was her concern for chaos in the city. People could come here to party and just have a good time. Well, unfortunately, banning short-term rentals is not going to resolve this issue. If they want to come and party in town, they'll find a way to do it. Banning short-term rentals isn't the solution to this. I have yet to hear a legitimate reason as to why short-term rentals should be banned within city limits. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Looking for any other hands up. Yes, come on up.
John Prosser, Anacortes. I'd like to, in June of 2022, I was retained to market the last 10 units of the elevation 31 condominium townhomes. And I thought it would be important to share who bought these. So there, there was units 902 through 920. 902 was purchased by a lady with a medical business, but she traveled a lot. She wanted to have a home and also be able to rent it out. So she purchased that, the price was $490. These originally sold for $620. And so we're at $490. Then unit 910, 912, they sold to one of the guarantee, guarantors of the loan that was originally placed on these buildings. He now has leased those out for a year each and at $3,450 a month. And then you've got 9, 914 is a short-term rental, 916, it's old for $490. She, she lives there part-time and likes the ability to rent it out the other time. Same with 918 and then 920, they live there part-time or their family does and, and they rent it out. And they liked that opportunity to rent out partially and have a place to live. Everyone that bought these, they were fully furnished. Let's see. The other thing, the location of these, to the west is a motel, to the north is Sunrise Inn, to the east is an apartment building, and to the south is a rehabilitation center. The property is owned commercial and it, it fit in our minds. So I do not support the ordinance that is before you. I, I, I support retaining short-term rentals in the commercial and the CBD. I don't support having them in the marine-mixed use or the commercial marine. And they're already not, they're prohibited in residential. So that would, that would be my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, oh, I, oh, okay. So somebody's hiding behind the podium. Sorry, I can't, I could not see through the podium and, but come on up.
Need magic eyes. I'm Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan and I live here in Anacortes. My comments, I, I read them before the planning commission and I'm just going to repeat them here. Mostly, I just want to voice support for the proposed draft regulations banning new short-term rentals in the four additional zones. It's in line with the current housing goals of the city and it will allay community fears of rental units being taken off the long-term housing market and turning the city into another town overrun with out-of-town owners and guests. Around a dozen letters have been submitted in opposition, over half of which are from realtors, which represents a very specific group of stakeholders. To that, I will just say that when the city submitted the proposal, they also presented context about the history, the regulatory framework, and the current status of short-term rentals. A myriad of issues, including some presented by the realtors, were included as well as the possibility of future modifications. I applaud the work done by the city in regards to this proposal. And again, I voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, yep, come on up.
I'm sorry. My name is Kevin. I live in Anacortes.
And then last name, Kevin, last name?
Pratt.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I've heard this narrative of kind of the, you know, the demon of this multi, you know, unit house owner that lives in Seattle and rents out all these places. And I really don't think that that's the case. I look around the short-term rental community in our town. I think it's almost majority people who are living on property, renting out rooms, people like myself. I'm just a normal guy. I work seven days a week. I work with my hands. I'm trying to raise my family in this community, trying to keep up with the cost of living. And we rely on the income from our short-term rental. Essentially, what we're talking about here, what's been done in the past, what's being proposed tonight is just a form of social engineering. This is just a hope. And, and believe me, I, I think that your hearts are in the right place. I understand what you're trying to do. But I think if we look at history and we look at other examples, we can see that, you know, when you, when you twist private people's arms to try to create an outcome, it always backfires. It always creates a more negative outcome. And I think that that's what would happen here. We, you know, there's this idea, we don't want these people in our community. I think we should all wake up. The, the tourist is the Anacortes community. I mean, every restaurant, every shop, every experience, every hotel, every rental, we throw festivals every weekend for a reason. We live in a tourist destination. And if we don't like that, then we should consider living somewhere else. But my point is this, I just think that these are vital. There's a lot of people who don't want to stay in hotels. There's a lot of people that don't, that want more amenities that hotels don't offer. They want better, you know, economic value. The fact that our, the fact that, that short-term rentals are booked tells us that this is a service that the public wants. And so why should we say, no, you, you can't have what you want. We're going to offer you something that you don't want instead. Or in the case of our festival weekends, you know, go stay and spend your money somewhere else. It just doesn't make sense. I'll say, you know, it's disheartening of all things on the slideshow to see all, or 90% of the feedback kind of pointing all in one direction and yet to see the vote move forward anyway. It kind of takes your confidence away in the process a little bit. And I will say, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't know you personally, but I will say that, you know, a lot of us, I think, voted for you with some sense or maybe some hope that we could see some change and maybe move forward with our lives and peace and pursue our prosperity, you know, without the overreach of the local government. And I just think this is the ideal circumstance to, to maybe show where those allegiances lie. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Let's go right there first.
You're too young to have that problem.
We don't, we don't, we're not, we don't know what's happening. Okay.
But some of us understand. Cynthia Richardson, Anacortes. I'm 81 years old. I've been through a lot of ups and downs in economic cycles. Forty-some years in Seattle and 28 years in Anacortes. And one thing that I've noticed is that things don't stays the same. Right now, we may have a need for one kind of use of a rental property. Five years from now, that use may decline and there may be another economic need that arises that we have no idea right now. So it seems to me that we really ought to be thinking about whoever owns the unit, whether it's an investor or a homeowner or a grandma or somebody just starting out. We ought to look at the most flexibility so that as the economics change, as new festivals come so that as the economics change, as new festivals come to town or more young families or more old families or whatever, that whoever owns the property has some flexibility to decide how to use their property. As somebody already said, the short-term renter may turn into, a long-term renter may turn into buying the property someday. Or the reverse may occur. I think that our mayor is familiar with Navy personnel who have to move pretty frequently. And maybe the house isn't ready yet and maybe I need a place just for two weeks. That's just a tiny use. But it's one of many ways that if it's flexible, if you have it open to short and/or long-term renters, it meets the needs of more of our citizens over the decades.
Thank you. Okay, I saw a hand up here to the, over here. I thought I saw a hand up. Yep, come on up.
Almira Yecta, Anacortes. Short-term rentals can be rented anywhere from one night to 30-plus nights long-term. When a family of five with kids stay at a hotel, it just sometimes doesn't work for them. You know, they need the space. They need their kids to do homework in a bedroom versus all be cramped up in a hotel room with the bed just right there. It just doesn't work for them. These are the feedback that I receive from families that rent short-term rentals. Hotels cost more for families and they just don't provide that. If you book a short-term rental to stay a long-term, you don't have to buy the furniture because it's already fully furnished with everything you need. You can cook. You can, they come with linens. They come with everything that you need for your stay, your short-term stay. This is all about flexibility. Please allow homeowners to do what they want with their properties, what they wish to do. It is their investment, not anyone else's. Short-term rentals provide housing and thank you.
Thank you. All right, any looking for hands before I turn it over to the council? And before I turn it over to council, I just want, you know, first of all, my job, I don't get to vote on this. My job is to provide the staff and do the research and try to provide the most accurate information as possible for council to make that vote. But in part of that research, and I know Ms. Grange touched on it a little bit, but in the Housing Action Plan that was adopted by council, one of the interesting things that I pulled out of there was relatively light measures are recommended, given the current number of short-term rentals in Anacortes with stricter measures possible to enact if problems with short-term rentals continue. So just something for council to think about in the Housing Action Plan that you all adopted. And with that, I'll turn it over to council for discussion or any direction to give to staff before we bring this back for final determination. Somebody's got to go first.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
A couple of clarifications. First of all, in this action, we're talking only about the commercial zones. We've made that point a couple of times, but I think it's worth reiterating it. In the planning committee, which is Ms. Moulton, Ms. Cleveland McGrath and myself, we have had a number of conversations about allowing for some limited short-term rentals in the residential zones when they are owner-occupied. But in the interest of keeping things simple, we did not try to achieve that in this package. This package is only addressing the moratorium and only in those couple of commercial zones. Also, when we're talking short-term rentals, we're talking rentals 30 days or less. Now, there's nothing prohibiting a different model of rental where the length of a term is longer than 30 days and you provide furniture. And in fact, there are models elsewhere in the country, just not here in Anacortes where that's done. I appreciate that there aren't a lot of short-term rentals available in Anacortes, but there's also not a lot of available housing for people. And that is, of course, the reason that we're all here tonight. Just as an FYI, I did look up the couple of court cases that were cited. They are not relevant to this case here. There's nothing in either opinion that suggests that if a CCR, because they were about covenants, not about the general regulations imposed by a city, if a CCR actually prohibited short-term rentals with a definition of less than 30 days, there's nothing in those decisions that would suggest the courts wouldn't uphold it. Moreover, the city is not a homeowners association. We need to act in the interest of the many, not just the few. We had a meeting the other night on the comp plan. Ms. Cleveland McGrath was there. It's been referenced in this meeting. There were certainly mixed opinions in the community on housing. I think we're all aware of that. There were no mixed opinions on short-term rentals. The opinion in the community, besides the people that own short-term rentals, is that they're not really enthusiastic about having housing consumed by short-term rentals. But the overall goal here, I think, in all of our discussions about housing and our discussion about short-term rentals, is to try to build a sustainable community here that has sufficient housing for people who work at the hospital, for people who work at Dakota Creek. We are not talking about trying to import people from Anacortes, from, into Anacortes, from elsewhere. We are talking about people who live in Anacortes, who if they lose their apartment, have nowhere else to go because there aren't enough vacancies. There's not enough fluidity in the market for that. This ordinance specifically is targeted at the commercial zones because we're allowing multifamily buildings in those zones. We're allowing density, height, and bigger buildings, and not everybody's in favor of that. But if we're allowing that bonus height and that additional density over what we had before, it's because it's important to get residences built so that our jobs that we have here in Anacortes have someplace to go at night. Not a lot of people are excited about the height. Neither necessarily am I. But if it can achieve that housing component, then I think it's a worthwhile trade-off. Where that, those types of buildings get built and then they are used for short-term rentals, we aren't getting the trade-off. We aren't getting the benefit that we need for the benefit of our community. I think it should be very clear, because we know from Econ 101, that if you build supply, you reduce price. Reducing the supply drives up the price. And the short-term rentals have the effect of converting residential units to commercial units, to units that aren't long-term rentals, that aren't really housing and thus reducing the supply. Now, we don't, we don't have to be absolutist on this. I think Mr. Prosser had a good suggestion that we prohibit short-term rentals in the MMU zone and the commercial marine zone. But maybe allow them in the commercial zone and the CBD zone. I don't know that I would support that specifically. But being able to pursue some third way, I think, is certainly something that we could do in the future. At the moment, the proposal that we have in front of us is the simplest way to get to, I think, where we do need to go, which is to make sure that when, say, the MJB development gets built, that it isn't a whole bunch of relatively tall buildings for Anacortes that are empty, that are short-term rentals. I remember, it was 10-plus years ago, Wally Funk saying that the thing that he worried the most about for that development there, the MJB development, was that it would be purchased by people from elsewhere, Seattle, and no one would live there. And in the alternative here, in this day and age, it would get rented out as short-term rentals. That is one of the reasons that we pursued this moratorium is to make sure that expectations are set for what that development down there ends up being. So I'm in, I'm in favor of the ordinance as presented. It's simple. It's clear. It's clean. It directly addresses the problem in the commercial zone. There are alternatives under the ordinance as presented. You can rent for more than 30 days. You can rent in a commercial building. And then we can work on maybe some other allowances, as we mentioned, maybe owner occupancy. Because yes, if you're not converting a unit out of the residential market, then you're not affecting the supply and thus the price. But for now, I think it makes the most sense to pursue the ordinance as presented. We can work through that, through those other conditions or allowances in the future.
So also what I'm hoping to get from council is any direction like that, or some options that you might want to see as opposed to the outright prohibition. So.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
So I'm going to pre-apologize because, again, being newer to this process, I did go back and watch the first meeting on March 27th, where Mr. Messmer presented everything, the recommendations of the planning committee. I heard your quote from Wally Funk then as well. I remember, he's a good guy. So I have a couple of questions. I consider myself to be a pretty practical person and I'm not, you know, I don't pretend to think that I'm going to make a decision or a vote, that I somehow have a magic crystal ball that will definitely tell me what is going to happen. Will it have this effect? Will it have that effect? So I just have a couple of questions. And I do not expect you, since this is first read, I want to be clear. I do not expect you to answer these right now. But these would be some things that I'm looking to kind of know before this comes against council again. So in, on the 27th, that meeting on 3/27/23, we talked about community concerns. And I was just curious, how many concerns from the community came forward? Were they in written form? Were they, you know, were they comments at a meeting? Like, where did that concern originate from? That's kind of what I, like, you know, we changed a parking code where we allowed signage and come to find out, there was one person that was one of those signs and a whole bunch of other people that didn't. So I'm just curious what, where the nexus of those concerns were and like, and how many. Also, you had mentioned, and I loved your slide, thank you for the hard work on the slide presentation. It's very informative and very helpful. It just, again, because I'm newer, it just had more questions. So you mentioned that there's been quite a bit of development once that code was changed in 2019. And my question is, like, how much? Are we talking about like five units that were built? Are we talking about 100 units that were, that were built to turn into short-term rentals? And when these houses were built, or condos or whatever they were, were they built to be affordable to purchase? So like, if our, if our goal is to, you know, have more affordable housing available for people, were these also built, you know, they followed the code, obviously, but were they built at an affordable price range as well? I'm also very curious, I wrote down the HAP recommendation slide. Could I see that slide again? I didn't, I didn't, I think it was the one where you had the HAP Housing Authority and then there were several recommendations that were... Sorry.
It was. Let me get my notes off of that.
Yeah, it's okay. Sometimes I wish these were in the packet because I could like write those questions out before.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
No, 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 it's a totally good.
They will be published with the final, the final version. So when you go back to pull it.
Sometimes you're working on it right up until 5:40.
Oh, sure. I'm sure. That was definitely not a critique.
Okay, so the.
Right there. So the Anacortes Housing Action Plan, I was interested. It looks like there's a lot of different measures that could be taken other than just an outright, an outright ban. So I was just curious why the city feels that's the best route to go versus some of these other provisions that are in here. And again, you don't have to answer it now, just, you know. I was also curious about, I found it interesting on one of the slides that it said that the short-term rentals definitely affect the market, but there was a footnote that said that owner-occupied units do not impact the housing market. And I thought that was pretty interesting because I feel like this whole, this whole discussion around short-term rentals is a little bit nuanced in a lot of ways. We've heard a lot of different stories tonight from, from different folks that have brought up, you know, reasons that they needed them. And I'm, I was really, actually, I watched the Planning Commission meeting and I was happy to see that bonus recommendation. I definitely think that we should go back and revisit the outright ban of short-term rentals in owner-occupied houses. So I thought that was kind of interesting. Do you know, you had put up a map about the amount of units that are in, that are currently short-term rentals, and I think the number was like 72 or 84?
Yeah, so that was this one?
Yeah. 82, sorry, not even close.
In 2021.
And so that's 2021. Do we know about how many of those are in the area of the CBD, MMU, CM zones? Do we know about how many of those out of the 82?
We think less than 20.
Less than 20, okay. And then, this is a real practical question and I'm sure there's a good answer for it, but what would happen if people just do it anyway? So like, is there any kind of, I'm, I'm sorry, that's just, I apologize, you know. Like, if people just are like, okay, we're not going to listen to the code. We have this. We're just going to do it. What, what happens in those cases?
Well, the city does require a business license for any business conducting business in the city. And so a short-term rental would need a business license. If they were not going to get a business license, then there would be enforcement action through that because they did not follow that particular regulation.
Sorry.
I heard something over there.
And then, and then kind of to that point, so the current folks that have the business licenses, they're grandfathered in. So they have a business license. Does their business license pertain to the amount of units that they can have? Or could they, could a business license add additional units under what?
A business license is required for each location.
Each location, okay.
Yeah, so it's location-specific.
Okay. And then, so the community input that we received recently, there's been 15 letters, five commenters. Obviously, we've had a lot of new commenters here tonight as well. Our most, it seemed like from your slide that most of those folks were in favor of allowing the moratorium to expire. Would you say that that balances?
Yeah, I would say based on review of the comments, there were a lot of concerns with the way that the ordinance is currently drafted.
Okay. And then the last thing that I'll say is I just find it, you know, to Mr. Glade's article, I mean, I think, you know, regulating was the word, I believe, that was used in that, in that article, which I, I like. Because I feel like a lot of times we're looking at a yes or a no when maybe we should be looking a little bit towards like, is there, I think it was even brought up at the Planning Commission, like, could there be a registry? Is there a way to cap it? You know, I'm sure there are other cities that have totally just outright allowed it. And we've seen the big fear realized, right, where it's turned into short-term rentals only. I'm sure there are cities like that. But I'm also pretty sure that there are probably cities who have looked at this issue and came with a more open but careful approach. And I'm just, I'd be curious to know if, I'm just curious to look at it a little more from that perspective. I sometimes wonder if yes versus no is the right thing or maybe, you know, a little more discussion, a little more option, maybe a little more direction to staff to come up with a different, no, I'm not directing staff, but to come up with some different, some different ideas or some different, some different options. Yeah, and I'm just curious, before they changed the code in 2019, do we know how many short-term rentals we had?
I don't have that information.
No worries, no worries.
But we can work on trying to get that info. I'm going to just work my way down the dais and Mr. Walters already commented. Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Good cut in front. Okay, so as one of the planning committee members, we've had a lot of discussion at the committee level on this. Mr. Walters hit on a number of the conclusions that came out of the planning committee. So I will kind of expand on that. First of all, I did speak to you for 30 minutes, Mr. Gold. First of all, I did speak to you for 30 minutes, Mr. Gold, on the phone. We had a pretty thorough conversation. Yeah, we chatted for quite a while, and I would like to say that, I believe it was Diane, I didn't miss, get your last name, but I think that, to me, your argument is one of the most convincing reasons why we need to have a real robust discussion about this. Because, you know, when there's an emergency, when there's a change, moving homes or doing a remodel, or someone gets sick and you need to move and be closer to the hospital or care facilities, or there's a flood, you know, that's a real temporary emergency that has to be addressed, and being in a hotel room is not usually conducive to that. But on the other side, that's a temporary issue, and what we're trying to address when it comes to housing for our entire community is how do we provide and encourage permanent affordable housing for everyone who lives and works here? And that, trying to balance those two of that temporary discomfort and permanent housing for folks, is something that's a challenge. You know, I'm, in this discussion, going against most of the folks who have reported, in my day job in real estate, we see this all the time, people are selling houses, people have to move out of their house to get it prepared to sell, they're waiting for their next house to be done. I just, to me, I disagree with the argument that this short-term housing option is the only solution. I know of Anacortes cottages, that's been in business for a number of years, that has changed ownership and has been very successful. Those units are 30-day rentals, they are fully furnished, you rent them by the month, it's been a successful business model, and, and has been, I've had clients use. I know of at least three hotels that have flex spaces, either one or two-bedroom units with kitchens. Maybe we need more of that. I think there are some business owners that are, or hotel owners that are looking at that option in the near future of doing some more of those kind of long-term hotel stays. And so I think that, that we've got to kind of have a more nuanced conversation that, of what we're looking at. You know, the other argument of the housing prices being depressed because you can't do short-term rentals, I don't know if that's necessarily a bad thing. Our housing prices have gone, have continued to go up because this is a destination and people can come from other areas and pay what they want. But then, there, that may not actually be a terrible thing if housing prices rise at a little slower rate because this isn't an option. I also think, going back to the hotels and motels, you know, they're required to do safety, they're required to do insurance levels, they're, they have an expectation because they're a business and they're professionals, whereas when we talk about short-term rentals, it's a mom-and-pop situation. Is it as safe? You know, what kind of requirements are put on that? I think that there, we aren't hearing much from hotel, hoteliers, even though they are the biggest, you know, they pay all the LTAC dollars that we're talking about, funds available for. It'd be nicer from them how that, how this impacts them, maybe it doesn't in the long But the next conversation that I agree we haven't had, we talked about it a little at the Planning Committee level, and I unfortunately was not included in the Planning Commission discussion, which I did watch, was, yeah, what does it look like to do some kind of middle ground? Whether it's monitoring and having a more robust percentage of short-term rentals allowed, or how do you enforce that? I think those are all good questions, but for purposes of addressing kind of this issue right now, I'm, I'm, I am in favor of prohibiting it in all of these zones. One of the discussions we've had, which might go back to Planning Commission, which wasn't discussed, is, and it's going to muddy the waters, is the, you know, is there a way to allow folks that live in their home, that have a basement that we heard about today, or has an extra wing of their house that they no longer use? Is that a possibility to have those essentially be not a bed and breakfast, but kind of a modified version of rental? And I think that that's something that we probably need to have more of a discussion on. We, I've heard from constituents that live in their homes, that don't use all their home, but would like to be able to stay in their home, either for changes in their financial situation, or just because of the increased costs and their fixed income, that they would like to do a short-term, be allowed to rent out a room and a bathroom and maybe, you know, a living room. But the difference with that is, there is still someone living in that home all the time, right? So we are not removing a full unit from our housing stock for permanent housing, and I think that that is something that I would be more inclined to have a further discussion on, because I have more sympathy for that kind of a situation and finding some solutions in that way than the idea that we need to allow short-term rentals because someone might buy a house and they're not ready to live in it now. Well, that's, then, then wait. Wait and buy a house later when you're ready to live in it, if you can't afford it. I think that we've got to try to protect our, our housing for folks who are going to live and work here.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So we're, we have a lot, we've had quite a few comments, both written and spoken, who we have not heard from are the people that cannot afford to live here right now. The people who are living in Marble Mountain and driving to work at Ghirardelli, the people who are working in the restaurants are police officers, are teachers, the people who work here, who have kids in school here, but they literally can't afford to live here. When we look at this slide, and the median nightly rate is $156, then that adds up to $46.80 a month. And granted, not all of these are full houses, but if you just take half of these, and that's 40 units, say, at $5,000 a month, that if they were half that price, a family could likely afford to live there, or be way more likely to be able to afford to live there. And I don't think that this percentage that we have right now is a huge problem, but we are looking at future development, that we have written our code to encourage, and buildings will come, and multi-story, and larger units, and we want to get ahead of this. We do not want huge buildings, like I think Mr. Walters said, on MJB properties that are rented out as short-term rentals at the, at prices that might be even double this. We want housing to be affordable for people that work at the businesses, that people that come, attend the festivals, want to support. We need, it's great, people come to festivals, they know if there are 10,000 or 20,000 people coming to the arts festival, they're not all going to be able to stay in Anacortes, like, you plan for that. But the people that need to live here and work here, that's what we're going for. We're trying to prevent the situation that happened in Sedona, that happened on Orcas Island, where local businesses of, that have been there for years and years are literally closing, not just closing some of their, limiting their hours, they're closing because they don't have workers, because people literally cannot afford to live there. So that's what we're trying to prevent. And this ordinance might not be perfect, but I am in favor of adopting it as-is, but this is not the end of the story. We need to continue to work on this. The whole owner-occupied thing, to me, that seems like it could be very reasonable, but we really need to get a handle on this, and we're not just trying to prevent people from not being able to, you know, they're, we're trying to, we want regular people, working people, families, all ages, to be able to afford to live here. That is all of our heartfelt goal, and we're working on it. And to me, this is a step in the right direction, and there's more work to be done.
So because we're, before I go to Ms. Hubick, because we're getting a lot of info and I can't remember it all in my head, I heard a couple of council members say, MJB property and the marine mixed use, so do you want staff to bring an option back where the marine mixed use is just part of that? Because we can certainly, we can certainly do that where the marine mixed use, I mean, it's a matter of a C versus a blank, or a P versus a blank, I think, in the, so that kind of work is not hard. And then, the other option is, Ms. Cleveland-McGrath brought up about the, it's right out of the Housing Action Plan, prohibit short-term rentals in residential zone, or, which is already prohibited, but we do have residence-type buildings in those, in our CMMU, or maybe not MMU, but the ones we're talking about, we do have, you could have a compromise like Mr. Fantini was talking about, and Ms. Cleveland-McGrath brought up about, owner-operator lives on the property, so we, those are, those are something we could certainly do.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Just follow up on that. Libby, could you put up the slide of our options right now? Because I believe if we don't, is it true that if we don't adopt this or not adopt it, it's back to the drawing board and we start from scratch? That's, that's why I would personally think that, I would approve this.
Bring, bring that later, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, sorry. Thanks, just clarifying.
You can bring it back any time, you know, council can change, change these at any time, but the timeline we're working on, and correct me if I'm wrong, is our, our work plan expire, the 27th of March?
Yes, the moratorium expires.
The moratorium expires on the 27th, so we would have to extend that moratorium next week, and, or, or you could do an outright, outright ban, and then we could work on some of these other things. So, sorry for that interruption, but I think as we move forward, it's important. Ms. Hubick.
Thank you, I'm totally fine. Ms. Grange, could you put up back that slide that shows the number of units that we'll need going forward? It has a little bar across the top by AMI. So, I'm just kind of echoing everything that's already been said here. This is a solution for now, but we are also looking very far ahead into the future. It's not always just about the existing housing, it's about housing that's going to be built, housing has to get built on property. When the housing authority may discover a piece of property, or a piece of property goes up for sale, and there's more room to build on it than what an existing structure is. So if someone is an investor coming in to build units that are going to be turned into short-term rentals, they probably already have backers. They're probably going to come in with a bid higher than what someone like the housing authority, who needs to provide 924 units of 0% to 30% AMI, can come in. It's a competitive market, it is supply and demand, and we have got to think about what this is going to look like 20 or 30 years into the future. I really appreciate all of the work that's been put into this, I really appreciate everybody sticking around and making comments. We can always go back and make adjustments to what is allowed. I really agree with everything that's been done in passing everything as it is right now. I want us to continue having the conversation for ownership rentals and options like that. One of the things that was mentioned in a public comment that I read was someone saying, you know, well, why don't you just tax these short-term rentals extra? Well, the state tried, the state really, really tried, it made it through two chambers in the Senate and off of the Senate floor, it made it through two committees in the House, and then it had 20 amendments tacked on it on the House floor, and the bill didn't actually go anywhere. And what we saw at the state were people emailing us, telling us that what they really wanted to do was just rent out rooms in their houses. Property taxes are going up because property values are increasing. It's, it's a struggle to live nowadays. We are in a housing crisis, we're in a housing crisis for people that are looking for places to live, and we're in a housing crisis for people who already have a place to live. This is not necessarily something that has to be forever, this, I feel like, is a stopgap measure that will keep us in a safe space so that we can continue to have conversations about how to meet the needs of the people who need our help. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. Everybody has already said a lot of really good stuff up here, everybody in the audience, you've all got really good talking points, you all come in with very individualistic stories and reasons that you feel the way that you do, and we honor and we respect that. And like Ms. Moulton said, we don't get to hear from the people that don't get to live here. So we have to think about the people whose voices are silenced, not because of anything that they've done, but just because of opportunities they may not have right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm capable of counting, and I can count on bringing back an ordinance that will likely be the permanent, permanent, putting into permanence the ban on the commercial marine, and, so, but we do have two council members that aren't, that aren't here.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
I would move to suspend the second read rule and move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Okay, I gotta have a second. A motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Walters to suspend the two-read rule for ordinances. I can do a voice vote there. Any additional discussion, first of all? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Okay, so motion carries to suspend the two-read rule, so it's, council, it sounds like you want to take action on this.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
I just feel that at this time, I'm gonna, I feel the need for any press, or even people that are listening right now, that I would just like to explain the fact that I am going to be voting no on this. I don't feel like I have the sufficient information to, to vote yes. So it's not necessarily that I am against, but I'm against it at this time because I don't feel like I have enough information to be able to make an affirmative yes vote.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Walters?
I don't think there's a motion on the floor, so I'd move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve ordinance 4075, that would amend Anacortes Municipal Code, add definition short-term rentals and prohibit short-term rentals in the commercial, central business district, marine mixed use and commercial zones, allow existing licensed short-term rentals to continue operation. Any additional discussion? Mr. Francis, I can take the vote, please.
Ms. Cleveland-McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
No.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for everybody for your great comments and participate in so.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So the one other tag-on to that, though, I think, is that we would like staff to bring back an extension of the moratorium next week.
What?
Are you, I anticipate that we won't publish and enact the new ordinance that we just passed prior to expiration of the moratorium on the 27th. Do you think that you?
I think it's five days it goes into effect. Mr. Coleman?
It's five days after publication. Publication would be next Wednesday in the Anacortes American, so five days after that would be April 2nd.
Okay, so, there's a, there's a few days in there.
Yeah. So I'd ask, we extend the moratorium so there's no interruption.
Okay, so we'll bring that, we'll bring that back on Monday to extend the moratorium.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item 6E, this is a contract award, manage, detection, and response service. And Ms. Hub is already made her way to the podium. Ms. Hub.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Tonight, I have a contract to bring forward. It should be a very simple contract, but I know that the presentation really shows, my slides are, I'll go through them really quickly. Managed detection and response is really a managed cybersecurity service that the city enters into with critical... service that the, the city, um, enters into with Critical Insights. It does provide intrusion detection of malware and malicious activity in our network, and assists us in any kind of rapid incident response to eliminate those threats. Um, municipalities certainly are at risk for cybersecurity events. We're always trying to, to find ways to increase the security and stability of our network. Soon, uh, some of the things that we do is look at measurable risk reduction, um, as a part of the, the contract with Critical Insights. We meet with them on a monthly basis, but then they are monitoring our system twenty-four-seven, um, uh, in the, in the United States, and actively monitoring our, our network. They collect, um, our syslogs from all of our domain controllers, our servers, our computers, our network devices, and, and other critical assets. And they're looking at those data stream logs, um, twenty-four-seven. So, tonight, I have a contract, um, number twenty-four-zero-one-six-ITS-zero-zero-one. This continues a service that we have had in place since twenty-twenty. It's a personal services contract, and this is a three-year contract totaling a hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars, one hundred-and-eleven, one hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars and fifty-three cents, with annual payments of thirty-seven-thousand, forty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. This has been budgeted for in the, the twenty-twenty-four budget, it will be something that I will be seeking budget authorization for the, the remaining, um, the, the remaining two years of that contract. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from Ms. Hue?
Mayor?
Mr. Walters?
Uh, are, are you familiar with the Albert sensor?
I'm not, personally.
Okay. Um, I, I would, uh, just like to ask you to investigate the Albert sensor as a potential alternative to this, but we've been using this for a while. I'm comfortable approving this contract, but, um, I'm, I'm aware that that, uh, device is provided by federal government and might, might be a cheaper option for the future.
I believe that you and I have talked about that at IT Council Committee, so I'm sorry that you didn't have it in my head.
Could be. I, I don't remember. So, hopefully, you're excused as well.
Any other questions besides the Albert sensor? All right, motions then. Ms. Hubick?
I make a motion that City Council, also as the mayor, to sign contract twenty-four-dash-zero-one-six-dash-ITS-dash-zero-zero-one, with Critical Insight, in the amount of one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-eleven, one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars and fifty-three cents, to provide management, detection, and response services. Second?
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, be no further business for the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.